Good evening, everyone. We will, let me go ahead and start our our evening script for the school committee meeting. As the chair of this meeting, I need to confirm that all members and persons who have checked out the agenda are present and there made school committee members when I call your name, please respond. Mary Bradley?
Yes.
Hillary Griffiths?
Yeah.
And Mara Hope, we will not come this evening. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative.
Yes.
Jack Herrdels?
Yes.
Wayne White?
Yep, here.
Karen? Think this is Karen on yet?
No, and is she supposed to be?
But she got, she's not, never mind for that. Okay, and Emilio?
Yeah.
Wonderful. This open meeting of I'm sorry, I'm sorry, thank you. Karen, can you hear me okay?
She's not muted, she's good.
Okay. She's on, Karen, they're muting you.
Well, you can unmute yourself.
There you go.
Yes, I'm here, I can hear you fine, thank you.
Thank you. And my apologies, the, this open meeting of the Maynard School Committee is being conducted as a hybrid meeting as of the Act of twenty twenty-three, signed into law by government March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three. This act continues to exempt certain provisions under the open meeting law, or promote meetings of public access until March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. This committee is competing with Zoom and a person that's been on the district's website. Please know that this meeting is being recorded accordingly, be aware, and other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording, which is audible to if you if you're planning to report or broadcast this meeting, please throw a razor gun at the function now to go ahead and share the wifi log. Okay. Meeting materials along with this agenda, most of tonight's meeting materials are available on the Maynard School's website. Title of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four agendas under the tab School Committee. The public is encouraged to follow along with posted agenda and documents, plus the chair knows otherwise. Public comments is devoted to the High School Committee to hear from the public as such, and structured primarily supports a needed direction of reporting of public comment rather than advice conversation. Here are the general rules for any point of comment period. Any person who wishes to speak and make a comment during a virtual meeting may do so by signing up and to speak in advance, seeing the public comments agenda item and the link that's provided on the agenda. Please have your Zoom name match, so we may be able to unmute you to speak. All public comments are limited to three minutes to ensure that everyone who wishes to comment has the opportunity to be heard. No person may comment more than once without permission of the chair. As the, as time allows, the chair could consider allowing a person to comment a second time, especially if they do want to or topic and does not have been logged on. Email public comments in advance up to the public comment agenda item to commentsforscmeeting@maynard.k12.nba.us. You must state in a subject line, public comments, and include your first and last name and town to ensure your comment can be read. Comments read by the chair will only be read in three minutes. If the submitted comments are longer, they'll be cut out and ensure all comments are able to be read and they are timely, it is suggested that you descend to approximately three hundred and fifty words. However, submitted comments longer than three hundred and fifty words will be included in the public record and they are tied in. Anyone can submit comments for the public record after the public comments agenda has passed by providing an email copy to up until the end of the meeting, specifically stating their desire to have these additional comments included. Before we go on to the first item of the agenda, I'm going to cover a few grounds for an intensive in-person meeting. I will introduce speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their comments and remarks, I ask each member if they have any comments, questions, or motions. They would like to break out each member's traditional comments or questions if time allows. Please, while speaking into your ear, name is told and remember to speak freely and invite that consideration at three minutes. If members wish to engage with each other, please do so through the chair and take care not to interrupt anyone who's speaking. Finally, oh, people not have to do role call votes, even because we have all of those in person today. So I will go ahead and we will open the meeting at seven oh six. Are you showing us? Okay. Urgent business? Wonderful, wonderful, and just before, I should have said this earlier. We do have a lot of speakers, so I just, just everyone's awareness, myself included, that we make sure that everyone respects the government's time and any speakers are protected. Please also just be cognizant of concise information as much as possible. Okay. Public comments, any public comments?
None, then I can see.
Okay, and received. Student representative for? Nobody's received a report.
Hi. Okay. Um, I have the report, so for highlights, um, we have the town council meeting. Um, the citizens of Maynard voted to move the new Green Meadow project forward. Students in general are in support of the new school and are happy about the result. The WAVM telethon signups have started. Plans are underway and make this year's telethon bigger and better than the ones we had during and after the pandemic. Twelve German students and their three teachers have come to MHS for three weeks. So far, they are blending in well and getting involved in activities. Our first issue of the Tiger Times for twenty-three, twenty-four is out at maynardhighnewspaper.com. Middle school open house was very successful and many students got involved. Everyone who came had a good time and everyone loved the free dinner. Senior nights for athletics ended last night with girls soccer. They were all successful.
Hello. So for our concerns, we have that in response to student concerns about the workload and the homework policy. Miss York has met with teachers in large and small groups to better understand the philosophy behind the workload that some of the teachers have been assigning. SAC, which is the group we're a part of, had a good conversation about Google Classroom and the way it's set up. We basically talked about how we wanted it to be set up to help our workload and it's still a work in progress. We also have that students had the idea, um, for students who are registered to vote to be dismissed on election day and go to Fowler to vote, but in addition to this, have an excused absence.
And for our coming up, we have possible voter registration drive during lunch. Leaders of change have a costume sale on Saturday. Pop rally for fall tournaments on October twenty-seventh. Spirit week is coming up in November. We actually just voted on the days this morning at student council. Plans for Powerpuff and a bonfire are underway. I think the tentative date is the it's November twenty-first, I want to say, and the Hall of Names.
And if you have any questions, let us know.
Thank you very much, very much. It looks like you guys are outside somewhere, so hopefully you're on.
We're at the soccer game for the boys right now.
Oh, great, wonderful. Well, thank you for accommodating and squeezing us in. I'll go ahead through this members and see if anyone has any questions, comments, or concerns. Mary?
Yeah, I just had a question. Oh, sorry. What's the Hall of Names?
Um, so when you walk into the school, there's a bunch of fall decorations and each student's name is on it. So basically, they can find their name while walking through the hallway, just to like spread some fall joy, I guess.
Thank you. All right, um, my only question is, so when you said about the time off from school to go vote, um, is that something that's going to happen or that's something that you guys requested and are waiting on forward?
Liam Llewellyn, he brought it up to Miss York. I think we're waiting for a definite response, but she wasn't opposed to the idea.
All right, great. Thanks so much for taking the time tonight to come.
Of course, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for being involved in two different ways at the same time and also and I'm really glad to hear that you guys are thinking about voting and doing all these things to make sure that students are getting registered. So thank you.
And I will just say, get out to everything else. I'm very excited to hear also about desire to participate in our process because of those are, so whatever, I'm sure it's going to work, will work that out for the school, but if not, um, you know, and for the council, also engaging to be reporting during how that goes out. Um, the only thing that I wanted to hear about was the concern about workload. And I know there was a pilot for what that was already being discussed. That is this in relation to that same effort and it's kind of a data around that is being reviewed and reanalyzed and to envision that have recommendation to amend the policy for the school committee?
Um, I don't know if it's really in relation. I think it's just about how some of the teachers weren't going with the new policy that we discussed last year and made happen this year. But I think teachers have pretty much calmed down for the most part, and it was just students making sure to report on if a teacher was following the rules or not.
Yeah, I'd just say the discussions were around like generally just like the pretty insane workload that students are under with school this year. And, um, it was just like how, yeah, teachers weren't, not all teachers were following the homework policy or really thrilled with it. But I'm pretty sure it was discussed at the lead teachers meeting, so, and I think it's improved since, yeah.
All right, so it sounds like progress and I know teachers also do a lot of work, so thank you, teachers, for revealing all that spark that has to come back as well, because it doesn't stop there. But I look forward to hearing how that, you know, everyone getting online with the progress and how that might forward, so anything else, you're both welcome to stay and join, or enjoy your soccer, it's up to you.
Thank you. The score? Oh, it's one to one right now.
There you go. Thank you very much for that update.
You're welcome.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I will super center first.
Okay, and we have a lot of attention tonight, so I will leave my, we have actually several things that I would have mentioned, I'll just reiterate that we do have about a dozen German exchange students here for three weeks to an fabulous job. They appear at Fowler's, they give presentations. And they're really involved. And it's fabulous, but that format update after the back, they have ten ads. Uh, just, and then we follow, there's senior nights for athletics, especially the women's hall beach, so pretty lucky enough to go to girls soccer last time. Beautiful night. If you were lucky enough to go to the hockey, it was not a beautiful night, it was raining cold, but they the senior nights. Um, boys in the and also one, so it's been quite well. Um, uh, breaking news that it's one of the way out and no shots, especially visually, it was supposed to rain. But we said Sunday, so a nice field that that red eye and football answers for Sunday. Um, again, it's one of my, you know, status to do the Green Meadow building project, which I've always spent a lot of time on. We tell you we spent today, we had several students from WAVN and a lot of education WAVN filming over at Green Meadow to another video that I'll share and get shared on social platform, just about chill. So people who haven't had the opportunity, come and see it, or if you're new, let's say, and and hear that in their back. Thank you. Um, thank you, see you in the next appointment. Um, we are looking forward to November seventh. The next step in that process. Uh, and so again, senior nights have been super successful, the data actually, we did it, they're not only this year, so we did, we shared the information in each of our back school links and you can see the numbers up there. Uh, it was around forty people that were able to give you the information and sent it out to them electronically. We have a link in stores and then it's also been posted on the website, so people have had several different opportunities to interact. Nation, um, the next thing we're going to do, and I'm sure it's a time element, we had our diversity equity inclusion panel yesterday, and it was a very good meeting. We focused on a panel survey and there was time, we more channel on, hey, they're the next group that we totally dive into. So we did a little bit of a gap meeting. So if you look at that picture, that was as opposed you can see one or two presented, top to top, right? You blow that on.
I don't need to blow that.
Okay. Our whole presentation to here are the teachers about some of the systems that we have at this bottom pictures. That had to do with our recent professional development. There we had a hundred and seventy staff members, different between different buildings, trained by benchable first aid. We had four different trainers, we created new handle services. It's the same training, all of our professional practices, they didn't best friends, something that everybody trained. Uh, and at the same time, because our parents professionally had the opportunity to then explain uh, in October, a week ago, they actually went to the CPR post by to vlogs, so it's been really busy and productive professional development. I'm, I mean, Mr. Karyganis isn't here, but he has worked really, really hard to really his arm, but it just truly ramped up our professional development. Meaningful for teachers and comparative professionals. And if you're not in education, you may not realize how challenging arranging professional development is for two hundred people when they all go to the same job, they don't teach the same page, they don't teach the same subjects, but all the teachers in the same sense. Talkers, their profession is complex, they become teachers at the sixth team, the dispatch of the sixth teacher, et cetera. And he really works hard to hear from everybody and give everybody what's some sort of Mr. Can't. Okay.
I mentioned to Chuck how grateful I was that the parent professionals were in in port read, because having had friends over the years that were parents, they always feel sort of left out, like there's not a lot for them to do on professionally, so, um, like I said, Chuck, Chuck is really working hard, so make it meaningful for them, so, and that.
Totally. The next slide actually requires a continuation grant, the high quality instructional material implementation continuation. Uh, it's, but the purpose is a continuation to support our district two-one comprehensive, high-quality instructional materials, especially people who are darks. Use that money or stipends for professional development for educators to support the still going implementation of the high quality structure materials, which is, yeah, a fine, that forty thousand dollars and customizing people and monetize support from an expert to be the consultant, people to have solid instruction partners in Tennessee who have on the site and which staff, basically, this is supporting them, pushing them, and that funders in the total, on the total oriented, so what they said about funded that the L is part of the two thousand structure.
Is this you know?
Yeah.
Uh, I'll go on and just, um, any, any questions, Mary?
Yeah, um, we know, obviously, you do know, um, what race it's going to be.
So this is the continuation of, um, the CPI, the element group by
Okay.
and then end the place seven.
Okay, all right. The only reason I ask is because we had an Ed Foundation meeting on Tuesday night, and there was a grant pressed for more money to go to literacy initiative, so I just want to make sure that oh, that's okay, um, it was for Green Meadow. Um, it was Green Meadow for more decoders and, um, get what the program was, but it's all under the initiative of literacy, um, the literacy initiative, it just, it seems like there's like a bunch of different pieces.
Good question, good point, and I'm sure as we follow whoever asked, there are many programs at the elementary level, like Green Meadow in terms of decoders community awareness, and we can go on about all the different aspects of reading. So that may not be covered as well.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure that we don't end up the way that we ended up to get us where we are now, that there's so many octaves that everybody's not doing the same thing.
It does, when you said that, so the CKA, I mean, it's kind of core English and people, people trying to arts. But then at the elementary, we definitely have the foundations and we have several different programs to support that intensive level.
Right, that the elementary school doesn't have that.
Right, let's do that.
Just add.
Oh, wow, yeah, because again, it's just, I don't want to get us back to where we were, that, you know, make sure we're all heading in the same direction.
But, so.
Um, so can you just explain, well, just a little bit, so this weather issue and is this coaching and statement are happening current? Can you explain the timing?
Yep, so this is the continuation plan that that person, our instruction partner, same in last year, will come this year, and they come during our time, police times. Teachers, they, they started last year, so because we got a stretch plan, they continue. But that.
So.
So this particular funding, we won't expect until we
Okay, but it's basically available to the private.
Yep.
Okay. My other logistical question in the days. How does statement works for the professional development in terms of, you know, you have an early stage, you do the are the teachers who are doing the CPLA coaching, any statement that the other teachers are doing differently are there?
So they, they're not going to say.
Okay.
It's, it's a lot of people want, but they're not.
Okay. I would say, excited that we're continuing best learning literacy, so I love it. All right, so I will go ahead and make a motion that except allow the grant fund of one eighty-five for high-falling instructional materials um, and implementation continuation with forty thousand that is dedicated to stipend for professional development or education for the still patient, a high bond, some implementation, and for seven thousand four hundred dollars for the customer social visualization, it's about get a split lines and earlier, um, for a total of eighty-seven thousand four hundred, which would be out into process for two thousand for instruction. So, okay, any further discussion? All right, all clear? Great, motion carries. Wonderful.
We're
All right.
And the last slide is really a much larger discussion, I just do want to look it up. We are continuously working towards leeches, we have the needs to look at teacher sign forms. Uh, but Sunday night is every little top, it's more complicated than we usually should to disappoint leechers, to be blocked, leechers and rest sessions. Another layer is, so who funds that, that design-wise? Sign all that. And the CPC, I think, will be able to support that, and if they are at that one level, if they are at that level, whether they legally allowed for, and if you build leechers, do you then have to pass based on clean books, so our open and live a lot of leechers, people identify exactly, and I'm sure
I don't like how many
Okay, so that's just many of the issues that are involved with that, and it's definitely in process, there is a better notice of intent, so many to receive and see the features. So it is definitely interest motivation, so in terms of moving forward, just making sure that all that all questions are passed. Before we
I, uh, earlier, just had Brian said something, it's a lot of, and I was like, that's worth it, but this, um, and, uh, it just was very, very relevant, everything is here as well, so I just wanted to, that's something go back to, I was like, yeah, but it works, it's, everything continues to be just, you know, yeah. So, anyway, I just wanted to recap, this has been sitting in my mind all day, I've got so much to do, it is, okay, uh, thank you, and absolutely.
I don't believe, I'm a reporter, I'm a small, I can show that we're back, okay? If you're ready.
Yes.
So the district's, they need to see, you know, we should get paranoid from people in front of us. Um, but the district's multiple committee, it's a five, I think, of over twenty members. The purpose of this is to promote the richness of the various elements of progress district. Facilitate discussion and strengthen communication and develop resources to inform and the community of our district's language office. At present time, the membership includes five English teaching teachers, six Spanish-American teachers for high schools, like middle school world-class teachers. Our parent outreach coordinator who is here with us, Diane N. Color. One intervention specialist, and five goal-based or central office administrators. For the purpose of tonight's presentation, we'll be concentrating on formation of our English Language and Advisory Council. This has been a global multi-year committee for the past three years, and despite the conference, a few months along with the, we may finally be submitting a progress of our DL staff and our town outreach board. So I will absolutely turn it over to, you know, and Amelia. There's Murphy.
Well, please, she's here.
All right. I'm here, I'm here. I'm so glad to be here and to explain and talk about our LPAC that we're trying to get off the ground. Um, Emilio's there, so maybe he could talk a little bit about how, what we've been doing and read what we wrote up, um, and then I'm here for questions. I'm excited about this. Um, we just have to recruit parents. Everybody's so busy. So, Emilio, if you want to talk about what we wrote up?
Sure, uh, first of all, I'd like to introduce myself. So they got, they got an interview. Uh, my name is Emilio Torres, I, uh, which recently job, and I am originally from Rupaco. I am fully bilingual. I kind of went this many decades ago, um, where my parents moved me to St. Louis. And so I was thrown into the whole process of not knowing English, having to learn the language, and changes and everything that is required that I basically had to go through, this was back in sixty, so it's were a bit different. Um, so I'm extremely excited to be working with Maynard, uh, the special affinity to the school, because my wife Maria has been here for quite some time, so there are many different faces that I brought down the hall. Um, so we currently have, looking at the information, uh, total of ninety is here at Green Meadows, Fowler, and high uh, obviously, some siblings, families, uh, but it's a fairly high number. Uh, and we, like, we started in April of last semester. Got the parents involved. In June, we had another meeting and had some parents who were, showed sincere interest in the formation of help. Um, and now with the help of parents, children, and everybody, had been trying to get the parents to just become available, so this in final act. We're going to have a meeting on the twenty-fourth with the parents. Uh, we're hoping to at least get the same form that we had in June. Uh, that would be fantastic. At that meeting, the goal is to start and establish the bylaws that regulate LPAC. One of the other goals would be, at least, for, it may seem like a simple one, but I think it's the hardest one, is communicating with the parents in a com- through a comfortable meeting. And what I mean by that is not just sending an email, not just phone call, and nowadays, the last one, they remember that they recognize. And a way that they will feel, I started a WhatsApp chat, because many of them are from central, central, south Brazil. They feel comfortable meeting WhatsApp. So we started that, they responded, uh, So we started that, they responded, um. And then through that, hopefully that'll be needed that. Slowly start getting them. And also letting them know. That. Once they hear their voice is important. Um, many of them, for whatever reasons, uh. Feel that that voice is not a voice that's. Worth listening, that has value, when here is a lead office. We encourage it, we need it, and. I think once we start with the small group, we can basically. Expand that so that other parents can come involved and hopefully it will be a process that pretty much mushrooms and grows with itself. Uh. As. Been. Of work in progress, trying. Trying, try and coordinate their schedule. They work. You know, two, three jobs to try to make things. Happen. So. At the end of the day, that's something that we want that permission from that. We, I can't assume that I have that answer, I need that answer from them, so that. We can accommodate to those needs. And therefore be able to allow that. So. Right now, those are, and we have two parents that signed up for the D C. Uh, L pad that's going to take place on Thursday of next week. Follow up. So they'll be there, so that was fantastic. Um, so little by little, we're getting the words out and I'm also making myself available here one day to be. To meet with the teachers from the different schools. To whatever issues they may have. Finding the parents, finding the unity with the family so that. We can then let them know that there's somebody here. Communicate with them in their own language. And that there will. Now.
Perfect. That's a question, but I'll go through it more, thank you very much, but. Um, just before I do, do you need any, now this is really just purely an update of where things are going at this point, there's no. Particular action, uh, we said yes, we we were all excited to hear. So.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure I didn't lose anything in reference with that, because I I am excited for this, but I'll go ahead, Mary. Uh, no, thank you so much, um, this is just amazing, it's so neat. I I wanted to relay, um, a quick story that speaks to it, um, so a friend of mine was telling me last year, I think it was, we were at the open house of Fowler. I mean, I was there for the end foundation, but, um, a friend of mine came in with somebody that. I often spoke in English. And this friend was at her house, at this woman's house, for a totally different reason. And kept saying, you know, you're going, your kids are at Fowler, you know, you should go to this open house, and she was so intimidated by the school or by the. Process that it took my friend to take her by the hand and to bring her, and it was an incredible experience, but. The outreach that you're talking about is just so, and it's just one person, you know, but it changed our whole sense of coming to the school and and being embraced by the school and. That, so, um, your work is just, it's gonna be, it's amazing, so the faster we can do it, the better, but. What would you say is like your overall goal, long-term of, is it basically to make people feel comfortable or, um, what's the long-term? It's hopefully gonna be there for a long time.
That's the whole, um. It's. To. Get them involved within the system. And to let them know that their involvement. Is important. That it's not just. Lip service, that it's not, that it's important for for them, community, school, and that the. School needs their input. Like I said, I I can't, I don't know what the requirements are for for that parent. To meet with us. Right, if she's working two jobs, um, then I, we have to know that, we have to try to figure out a way. So that we can accommodate them. And obviously, this has other. But but that, my my. Goal, and I think the goal that Karen and Charles and all of us is to get them involved in this. And that we, that they were, that that system meets them, and that we as well. You know, are are welcome. That to to be part of that.
So much, it's really epic. Everybody, Karen, that and Charles, because I know Charles has wanted this for a long time too. Thank you very much.
Wow, yeah, just thank you, this sounds really wonderful, I think when you initially heard about it forming. I didn't have, uh, as high hopes as it sounds like you're able to implement. Um, it sounds really fantastic. I love that you're trying to meet people where they're at, um, and on their term and in their. That they need to, um, my two questions are, do you think you can meet with, work with CPAC at all and collaborate? Um. To for the. Kids that are more relatable, both areas. And then, um. I know the majority of the E L kids speak Spanish and Portuguese, but what about the other languages that, do you have resources for that or?
I personally don't, but I think that that's extremely important, uh. That. We, even those parents. Are. We, it can, you can easily somewhat separate the kid who would fight, I think there's something I meant to, uh, it's a Russian. Right? And and we see the world you're developing. You can almost predict what's gonna be. What's gonna be influenced and what they're about to need. So. I hope that I can reach out to that parent who need to get a Russian interpreter to assist the parents and that will be part of the process. So it's not just. The majority. I think that that majority of the parents also have to, that they have to, they have to, you simply, you know. It's gotta be inclusive, and I think the. The worst thing that could happen is that by reaching out to just those two majority minorities. Then we exclude others, so that that is not what L pack is. It's including everybody, whether it's Russia or Cindy or. Whatever, whatever that community is coming in, let them know that, yes, you're welcome. And that we are here by service that. Or need to.
Um, is it seeming like the school has access to, like, you have access to the resources you need, um, funding such to get a Russian interpreter or a Farsi interpreter?
I I understand that the. Issues of interpreting are available. Uh, I. As of right now, I think. Great. So no complaints, uh, so, yeah. Yeah, or or because it's an essential. To.
Uh, I just wanna make sure that you get whatever you need, because you're doing great work, uh, so I want to make sure we survive whatever you need to do.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you so much for all this, and just, uh, just to ask a couple of questions, I get a full picture. And I'll also say that it's funny because we're at the D I last night, I put together a parent survey. And part of trying to figure out, parents feel included in the. So I think. So thank you. Uh, so just to, just so that I understand, you have a WhatsApp based on the.
So the, uh, what we we had the second meeting. And you got your cell. And originally, I was sending Gmail to. Going to. Uh. And. Oh, I found one response and then the other, and one parent. Was like, oh, I need such and such a parent's content, it's like, oh, that this is such and such. They suddenly started contacting each other and then. Respond, so so that that's how it came. And from. Previous work that I've done, you know, there, I understand that WhatsApp is kind of their, their way to.
Everywhere. And then, and then that date was also set along because that was the. That it worked, yeah.
The we send out, so. We sent out a note for that day. And we pretty much set the time. And it was almost one line apart, we have seven days, have to get them here, and then from there, we can pretty much. Work. Uh, so I I would. Do a little part. Let me gather as many as I can, and once they're here, all right, what are you use here? Let's start building.
So if that meeting. In any different languages.
Uh, I. Probably have somebody helping me with Portuguese, which is, I call it span. Because, uh, I I can read it and I can understand it.
Right.
Uh, but speaking. This kind of crossover, uh, and I'm seeing. We go, we have the Spanish, so it's kind of crossover, um. But I think for the most part, I can do most of the. Communications with them. And as maybe gets more technical and gets. Growth that we may show resources. So as to have continuous interpreting of. When.
Thank you again, and of course, staying and hearing more about how it goes forward and. Such like, they're gonna be here, it is. So thank you.
Also, thank you, I know I love working up to where you're learning. I I did have some things, one, I know that when you're dealing with, uh. Which is not their first language. They tend to sometimes always know where are the emergent or serious areas they. Present themselves, I know in my personal and professional department to. Relation tasks. And it's sometimes they almost. That, uh, this is for. Age. Uh, so I know that they communicate that. Country to country, it's it varies across that scope, uh, where, what do they need to draw their attention to right away versus. What they might know not consider or prioritize right away. Uh, but with that in mind, do you offer any type of, or is there also, do you, uh, like. More appointments that they can kind of like schedule? Uh, and I know sometimes it's a confidentiality that a lot of. Uh, individuals, you know, are welcome to speak publicly about their certain, because of maybe their their status. And and or, you know, feeling like they're talking to each other themselves, so, uh, I've always found that having one of my patients, um, in the open door. It's really allow that. Be willing to work communication, is that something that, at some point that you've seen. Going into where they might with the drawing hours or. Hopefully like twenty minutes or something.
Well, this morning, actually, this afternoon, um, I was directly meeting them. And met with these principals over there and trying, you know, pretty. Figuring out why that I can be there. For that, it's that, uh, purpose, uh, so the parent comes in, she's got questions, issues, whatever. I would be there or we haven't determined yet, but. Even more, even for. I dropped the kids off and it was about fifteen minutes, I'm picking the kids up and I have fifteen minutes. You you kind of figure that that. They might. Obviously, if they're going on bus. Different, but yes, I think the the purpose of also being here Thursday is to avail myself. For that, I've already kind of done that locations.
So like you're doing that already kind of like. You know, it's still we got to that anyway, to build there.
Yes.
Schedule bits of minutes drawn in, you know, finally. Uh, or maybe not too.
That's why I wanted to hear on Thursdays, the plan is, I'll be the. Figuring out that it be once, one of the school. For hours, let's go certain hour, get a school certain hours, and that way. I can make myself available to those students.
Uh, and my other question was, just to take a thinking back on memories, I know that during the Fowler. Uh, if it helps or back to school. Back to, no. Open us, sorry, um. That we, I I was at CPAC and we had a table right next to the teacher there, and as we were kind of rounding up, it it became, uh, apparent. Like, hey, I don't have some. Cost, you know, an opportunity where maybe someone that can join whatever you're reading to go. There to see if there's a, you know, abilities for maybe absolutely focus on special education questions. Or things that they might be able to, you know, feel comfortable with, bring your questions here, so we'll have someone. Uh, who might be able to help us, and I I know that there is that that translation concern. But I do think that that might be an opportunity there, um, you know, but we, you're you're hearing it, I think it would be great.
I would love that, because I. Being part of the community for so long, I pretty much know. And, uh, I also know that. The big correlation. At times. Between. Learning of the language. And then the. Issues that the child have, and sometimes, well, you know. The child's learned X, but it's not able to communicate, and the parents aren't able to pretty much understand what's going on. And if, and I think that lays off, at least for now, hopefully everybody will have. Get carrots off, right, but I think that that's, that's also. That they understand that that is. That it's important, that CPAC also understands that, wait, if there's somebody here who can help communicate with a mom or dad or the big part. That we're seeing these issues. It's resource.
You, um, so I would say just to follow up on that, um. The CPAC board has an email address that's posted on the website, if I would encourage you to mail those to all members and, you know, just if there's an opportunity. Very, hey, might be helpful to have someone there as a parent, uh, you know. I think it would really be. A good step forward, uh, just so that, you know, they can have direct resources, but with.
Have the things that.
Um. Possibly, I would, I would maybe, it looks like there are twenty questions or the bylaws and stuff, so maybe, yeah, like, when would that opportunity? That's the structure before we kind of connect, I think, to that, something that would wanna. Kind of work that out to make sure that brings that. So. But, you know, we'll just take your, we go on after, kind of do that initial organization. Uh, and. Maybe we should figure out the best time to figure what we get. Thank you so much. Okay. Thank you, thank you, uh, I just wanted to say we have tomorrow's presentation, uh. Sorry, I. So, um, we want the solar project. For that, I know that is joining us for a moment, but.
Good evening, folks, I'm here. With Byron Woodman from wherever he is from Select, um, and I know that you folks have been. Anxiously awaiting an update on the solar project, and so we are both here, um, very pleased to be able to share with you, I think, some really good news. And if you permit, I know, I think, um, Brian, you just gave me screen sharing. Ability, I'm gonna share a very quick presentation, I know you have a chock-filled agenda, so I promise we'll be efficient. And once we go through it, we welcome any questions you folks might have. So let me pull this up. And can everybody see that?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. So, again. Two seconds of background. The last time we spoke with you and presented and met with you and gave you some updates, um, was in May of twenty twenty-three. And we provided you with some updates on some revised financial analysis based on design, um, reconfigured design mainly of the carport and some. Reconfigured design mainly of the carport and some sort of moving around the edges of the of the rooftop. Um, at the time, we indicated to you that the project economics didn't include any pass through costs. Obligations for any real property tax obligation that Select was going to be required to pay. Under state law and and for for the primary reason is, at the time, the town did not have an assessor. That was ready to address this project and putting in numbers that then needed to be. Sort of redone by your now current assessor seemed premature. So we are, we have now worked with over the past. Month and a half, we worked diligently with the town's new assessor. And have been able to determine the valuation of that tax obligation and have integrated that into the project. As you recall, at that meeting, um, you all voted to proceed with the project and recommended and recommended the select board. To negotiate and engage in a lease and power purchase agreement. With Select. Um, so since May. I always like to give you an update of the things that have been going on since I'm sure it seems painfully quiet. Um, many, many milestones have been accomplished. Um, and and they're big kinds of things. Um, Select went before the planning board. For approval of the project. Originally, it was contemplated that it was a minor sort of site plan review update to the school's site plan. And indeed, it was, but that process took some time as the planning board did their. Necessary and appropriate due diligence as to how the carport was going to be situated on the parcel and the impact it would have on the overall parcel. Um, two requirements, among others, but two major requirements that came out of the planning board decision. Was a requirement for Select to replace or relocate, and if they can't replace. All of the trees that are planned for removal in conjunction with the carport installation somewhere on the parcel. And to work with the town's tree warden to make sure that it's done appropriately. In addition to that, um, they required that the planned integrated LED lighting. Be um, installed with two controllable circuits, sort of a front and a back. That you could turn off at one or the other or both if desired at night. But it gives you the flexibility. I think their concern. Um, was that there might be some light pollution at night. And be problematic for neighbors. Um, it's not anticipated that it will be because the lights will go straight down. Um, so but nonetheless, Select has happily integrated that into the project. And the school department will have the ability to make those um, controllable adjustments when need be. Um, as I mentioned, the town's assessor determined the tax valuation of the tax exempt real property, that's the school property. That's now being leased for taxable purpose as required by state law. This is something that is required. Um, by state law and something that we again had to go through with. Um, the the new assessor. Who, after being on the job for about three weeks, was thrown into a mix of something he had never encountered. So. He had to climb that learning curve ladder in a very expeditious way and he did a yeoman's job. Um, the town, town council superintendent. Um, so Brian and Greg and Lisa Mead, town council, myself and a team of folks at Select Energy. Have been very busy negotiating the agreements, which I I believe are in substantially final form and I say substantially. Because we did share some additional changes with Select a couple of days ago and I know that they're busy. Um, digesting those and and will get back to us on them, but they pertain to items such as decommissioning. Either during the term or at the end of the term. Um, if the town, if the school doesn't extend the contract or choose to buy out the asset, just to make sure that the property. Is brought back to its original form. Um, and a payment bond, which town council um, has identified is absolutely required under mass general laws. Um, and that was selected, was unaware of that. So those are a couple of things that we're working on now within the contract documents. So what's the impact? Um, the impact is relatively marginal. Um, basically, there's about an average real property tax of about sixty-five hundred dollars a year that Select. Is obligated to pay and they will pay that to the town. And that has has been enveloped into their financial pro forma, which resulted in. A an increase in the power purchase rate from eight point eight six cents to nine point eight cents. There are a few things that remain outstanding that could. Change that marginally. Um, specifically, and the payment bond requirement and the impact that might have on the overall project. Um, again, they have to have payment bonds during the construction. But as you can see in this chart and I shared this presentation earlier today. With Brian, so I I'm sure he'd be happy to share this presentation with you if you folks don't have it. Um, but he did just get it today, just to show you sort of where we were in May. And where we are now. Um, and so where we were in May, there was an average savings and I think it's conservative because it's not accounting. For any demand charge savings you might have. And it's not accounting for any real significant escalation in energy costs, but um, in in May. Um, that what we shared with you was um, about fifty-one thousand dollars a year in savings. With um, and that's now dropped to ju-just under forty-five thousand dollars a year in savings. Still a substantial savings to the school. Again, I I think these are conservative estimates, but still a substantial savings to the school. Um, again, I would be remiss to remind everybody why we do all this stuff. Byron can talk about it in his sleep. I, on the other hand, always feel the need to re- reinforce them, right? So onsite renewable energy solutions are successful when we accomplish three major objectives, educational benefits, environmental benefits. And economic benefits. And I I can't say what order those should be in, but what I can say is I think the educational piece, particularly at a school. Is going to be really important. I think folks are going to see the carport and find that to be really interesting and exciting and cool. Um, and because the rooftop installation is going to be. Relatively hidden. There's not going to be a lot of information except for the URL that will be available for students and parents and. Community members to go online and to uh, make sure that Select is doing their job and keeping that. That asset operational. They'll see the near real time energy. Um, solar energy generation and be able to look at the offsetting environmental attributes. Like cars taken off the road or trees planted or those kinds of attributes. And and I think it's a, it's a great opportunity to to have students that have. Mathematical acumen to do some data and analysis and look at the benefits and and really get sort of deep into the details because I. I I am very, very positive and and hoping that this next generation is going to pick off, pick up where, you know, we old folks and and I speaking for myself. Um, are going to leave off eventually. Um, also, Select is always happy to do workshops and seminars for various stakeholders. Again, to make sure that they can integrate this into the educational. Curriculum. Um, you know, your student body is their next set of employees. So. They're anxiously, you know, looking at at working with you guys on that front. Um, from an environmental perspective, again, the project is estimated, again, it's conservative, it's based on thirty year weather data. And we know weather is changing, so it's estimated um, to produce. A little under four hundred, uh, seven hundred and five thousand kilowatt hours annually. Which will offset about five hundred and fifty tons of CO2, which is significant. Um, it's equivalent to taking off the road about a hundred and ten vehicles. Um, or about fifty-six hundred thousand gallons of gasoline consumed. Um. And my favorite statistic is it re- it represents about sixty million smartphones charged. Which is significant. So I'm gonna. Turn this over to Byron, who's going to talk to you about the preliminary schedule kind of next steps and um, then we're happy to entertain questions.
Thanks, Beth. Uh, can can you hear me okay? Through the speaker? Okay. That's great. So. We are anxiously looking forward to the next steps here. Um. And we've actually started already in terms of uh, the procurement of the materials. Um, as well as creating the permit sets um, for the building and the electrical permits. So as we think about the project, typically, our our starting point. Is when the documents are are finalized um. By by the select board and the and the uh. Town administrator. Um, and so. Our our timeline from that, you know, uh, starts from the time the documents are signed and then number of weeks from that. That start date. So. In the first three weeks, we're pretty much just working on finalizing. The um, the building and electrical permits. After that. Probably in. Within twelve weeks, we would be doing the site mobilization. Um. There would be a couple of days where we'd coordinate with the school and this would be in June. To load uh, the panels to the roof. Then we'd have the team that installs the roof. Uh, working on on that piece. That's going to be a faster piece. Um. Around at the same time, we'd be working on the carport foundations. Um, we can pour the foundations at that point. Um, the way that the foundations go, they're really at level with the with the asphalt. So we're really not going to need to pour any asphalt. There's one section that might need a little bit of hatching. Um, but we'll be pouring the foundations and installing the carport, which should be done. By April. Um, and then we'd be able to. At that point. Start to finalize things with ever source and that's really the ever source schedule. Um, we do put in a little extra time. It, in theory, it can go more quickly, but we allowed a couple of months um. For ever source to finalize and and do permission to operate. There are a couple uh, notes that I did want to say, um. You know, as 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 a reminder, and I know that we we've mentioned this before in the past. One of our key priorities is is working and dovetailing with the school and the school operations. So that's really important for us. Is after we get through the permit side and we know when. The installation would occur, we would be working very closely with the school administration. On timing, you know, when those crews would be here and and what they would be doing. Um, and then there's also, um. You know, timing regarding the specific labor crews. And potential material based on what we're seeing now for the fabrication of the canopies and all the material that we need. Um, we're tracking to schedule. Um, but. But until all the material is actually onsite, um. You know, there's, there's always that, you know, um. Caveat in there. So that's really where we are with it. Um. Going into the summer, the uh. Our goal is to have the system fully operational to to be capturing the um. Early summer and and summer production.
And and before we turn it over to questions, I just wanted to also, um. Um, be reminded that I know Brian had shared with, the superintendent had shared with you. A memorandum that we put together for the select board, which descri- which basically gave a project overview. You you folks have much more information than they did, obviously, about the project. Um, but gave a project overview overview, but also highlighted some of the key provisions that we have been working so hard to negotiate. On behalf of the town slash. School um, to make sure that this long term contract between Select. And the community of Maynard. Uh, addresses any of the. Possible scenarios that can happen and is in is fair and balanced and and protects, you know, the community's interests. So I again, the details I didn't put it in this presentation because I knew it would be redundant to what you have. Already read in the memo, um, but happy to talk about those items as well.
Beth, thank you very much. Um, I just wanted, before we go into questions from the committee, I just wanted to. Clarify, is there uh, an urgency that would require school people? Tonight. I know that this love board has. Wanted to wait to give their people. Only after the school committee. Proven this level or isn't, they didn't vote last night, but they're looking to make sure we try to see what's. Our board, our board, it's the way that the school takes. Vote action first and this one board, but I I don't think the school committee was really anticipating voting tonight at some point, so I just want to make sure. Are we running against any type of uh, project limitations if. By chance, the votes, love and we turn our two boards don't happen until the first or second thing or better.
So let me, um. I I, it was not my understanding that school committee tonight would be voting. Um, because of the vote that you folks took the last time and this we viewed as an update, but certainly. If that is something that the school committee wants to do, you know, a-absolutely, that that's fine. I think the most important thing, and it goes back to Byron's discussion about schedule. Um, things get caused until the contracts ultimately get signed. And I appreciate the the select board's um, decision to wait for school committee. To, you know, continue to show their endorse, your endorsement of the project. They would like to hear from. The superintendent that the school committee is still endorsing the project and is anxious to move it forward. For them to vote on the terms of the contract itself. But again, I I defer to you folks. I I wasn't anticipating a vote, but that doesn't mean you guys may not want to take one.
I I think it probably is just more than. A horn to make sure that they um, they are not unintentionally. Um, moving forward with a project that is relating to school areas. And so I think it's just, you know, how to be a major all safe and there's no surprises. So I I think I respect the select board's uh. You know, position that they they took on that. And I think we've learned from some historical. Other areas where it hasn't, you know, followed in safe that way. So I wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page. So. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna quickly ask the school committee before we do more questions every, you know, day, would be. Will be tonight. Um, okay. Okay, all right. So it looks like we will have a vote tonight, but I just, everyone's sitting there comfortably, but I, but I go through and um, ask the question. So that that ties up. All right. Uh, Mary.
Yeah, I um, just have three questions. Um, and it's more having, well, two of them have to do with the memory that you guys um, so nicely put together. Oh, sorry. Um, so there's a a a piece um, under the key financial provisions that says the town will have the option to purchase the solar arrays in the seventh, tenth. Fifteenth year of operation or at the end of the contract term. Is this one of the pieces that Lisa wants to put it? Because I know residentially, there's like a cost, like if you do it at seven years, this is what the cost is going to be. If you do it at ten years, this is what, is that going to be part of the contract so that we know what we're looking at?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Excellent. Thank you. Um, and then just an overall, what happens if Select is sold? If they're sold, I know that they have to live by their leases, but what happens if they close? Where where does that put us? Or is, I mean. It happens.
So I'll give you my answer and then I'll let Byron a- a-answer for Select, but typically, these projects are are assets. And the assets have value. To owners, right? And if for some reason Select was sold, they actually, as you know, probably a year ago, we told you that they had been acquired. By a much larger concern and I'll let Byron address that, but if for some reason Select gets sold, typically. The portfolio of assets goes to the new owner. And so that's something that we look at as we look at these contracts in terms of. Of making sure for that level of stability going forward. Um, and that's why we're looking at issues like decommissioning, just to make sure that at the end of the term, if the school says, we don't want to own it. And we want you to take the asset off, that there is a fac- a facility or an approach to making sure that that happens.
That's who the owner is. Yeah, okay. And my last one has to do with the finances and. I'm all about this and but it seems as though every time we look at the numbers, it's less for us and more for Select. And it's really, you know, that's why, part of why I want to do this now because in May, you've talked, we were saying that. We were going to be getting fifty approximately, and I know they're conservative, so I'm hoping the numbers are even going to be better, but we were going to be getting the fifty-one thousand. To the town, but now it's forty-four thousand, forty-four and a half. So. But but Select is getting an extra a hundred and thirty thousand dollars over it. So why does the number for us, the benefit to us keep decreasing? And the number for Select keeping losing?
So so that's actually a result of the tax liability. So Select isn't keeping that money. It's kind of left pocket, right pocket? Sort of.
They're actually paying for the property tax. That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
They're not absorbing it. It's getting, it blended into the project.
And and one, one way to think about it is, is Maynard's receiving two. Effective. Either savings or revenue streams. One. One's benefit is the savings on the electricity and the other benefit. One's benefit is the savings on the electricity and the other benefit is the revenue that you're receiving in the taxes, so before. It was just the savings was optimized and now it's a combination of the savings and the tax revenue that go into the model.
Alright, thank you.
Um cause I sort of have some similar questions, um so the. Why did the power purchase rate go from the point oh eight eight six to the point oh nine eight? And then um the statement that said um. Sorry, um that the point oh nineing is fixed unless. There is an unknown unforeseen circumstance in connection with the construction. Um to reconcile the property taxes. I'm all that, that's the part I'm not understanding, but I I hope, I understand why we need to pay taxes now, and that that wasn't counted for before. Why is this, the, why did the fixed rate go up to the point oh nine eight? Is that, can you tell me about that and then about unforeseen circumstances that could make it decrease more?
Yeah, Byron, I'll I'll let you address that one.
Okay, I think I think I heard it, but if if my answer appears off target, then please let me know. Um I guess there's there's two different questions, one has to do with. Um a function for why the the PPA rate may change, right, and so. Um there's there's two aspects to that, one is um. There's a bond that's required that was not included in the original model, um and so. Um and that's part of the legal provisions that we're finalizing now, we're not expecting it to make a significant. Difference to the the PPA rate, but it is it is additional cost that goes into the model that we then have to. Um you know, reflect in the PPA rate, so that's that's one number or one one possible change. The other change that that may happen um unlikely, but but there is a possibility. When we do the construction, it's actually over two hundred feet of of trenching and there's. Um shallow ledge in some places. And when that occurs, we don't know how much time or energy is gonna be involved with the excavation process. So although we've done geotech studies um and boring holes and samples and. You know, in in the likely spots where we'd expect that, um you know, obviously, a a two hundred foot. Trenches is a long distance, you know, and you never know. Um what what you're gonna get under the soil until you actually start, you know, and and get through that piece of it. But those are really the the only two variables that I'm seeing at this point, but that's. That that's the that's the answer.
Okay, um. That's outstanding in the contact with the town. Um how outstanding is that, like, can you tell me a little more about, I know you sort of mentioned it, but. The the P uh um the presentation that says it's still outstanding with the town council and town, um. What would be expected to change and why are we doing this now as opposed to after that piece is resolved?
So so the the items that are outstanding, I think is, I I I think in principle. We're in agreement, we just haven't seen the turn back from select, so I don't wanna tell you that I I think we're done. Until we see what they come back with, but the sort of the two key issues, one is the payment bond. Which again, select was unaware that they need to ha- needed to have, and I've had a conversation with power options about that.
And and we are putting that in, so that.
And they're put, right, they're putting it in, now we just have to s- socialize it into the cost, so we don't know what that is yet. And I know they're working on it, and then the second is how we deal with the issue of decommissioning. And you know, they they had an approach, we had an approach, and I think we came to something that everyone can. Can be comfortable with, you know, when when it's time to take the asset off, to make sure that your interests are protected. And and Lisa Mead was very, very focused on that because she, again, y- you don't often enter into twenty year. Contractual relationships and in twenty twenty years is a long way from now, to make sure that you're protected in twenty years from. Something that hopefully will not happen. But so we're close, I think it it's really wording and, you know. Byron was hoping that he might have been able to get us the turn, you know, today or tomorrow, and I'm hoping that we are able to get him by the end of this week, if not. Early next, but we should be very close on those, uh those are really the la- the last two issues.
Um I I definitely support solar and I want this project to go forward, but. I'm a little bit uncomfortable with the fact that in May, I thought this was happening in the summer and then it suddenly didn't. And then I thought we were getting a certain amount of revenue from this and now we're not, and then there's the. Were asked to support it today based on these changes to an agreement that actually isn't completely, we can't see yet. And then there's these loopholes for increased costs that come in the future, it's just, it's. Something that I was totally supportive of in May, it's got a lot more money right now, um.
Ask a question just later on that thought process, um so back, uh will. Will these contracts be resolved uh by November second?
I I was hoping that we have, we'd have executed contracts, if if the school committee continued to endorse the project. I was going to ask the superintendent to send a communication to Greg. Johnson, who would then, eh you know, share that with his select board and maybe, and and they have been willing, as you probably know, Natasha. To schedule a a special meeting to address just this issue, so that we can get select moving forward and get the project. Put in place and capture as much solar generation next summer.
Okay, so the the timeline is really something we wanna start capturing the solar, and that's what, that's the. That's what I guess is getting it online to maximize the benefit of the.
But I I'm sure Byron will grimace when I say this, but if 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 it takes two weeks more. So that you make sure that you guys are comfortable and you're you're, you know, you're resolved with this project and you're still fully supportive. In order for you to give that sort of thumbs up to the select board, because that is what would cause them to act. They will not act as you as you know without it, then then I say take those two weeks, if that's what is, you know, you guys need. We we've been working very hard to get to this point, rushing it at the end and you not being comfortable is really not something that need. That I I wanna do, and I'm sure neither does Byron.
Uh I just really quick question is, what is the impact on the parking for students and staff in the spring, if this according to this timeline?
Did you hear that Byron?
Uh what would be the impact to the to the students and staff, um? I mean, I think it would be fairly minimal, the the. The rooftop installation is not gonna be impactful at all, there'll be a couple days which would require a crane to get the. The panels located up onto the roof and there'll be, um you know, make sure to have, uh you know, traffic. Um rooted around that, that's gonna be um, you know. Navigated and dovetail with with the administration in terms of those specific days, and then once those panels are up there. We're just doing the installation um on the roof, so that's not gonna be impactful at all. Um in terms of the the canopy, that would actually be um that one section. Which is currently a visitor's lot now, so the impact there would obviously be. Making sure that the visitors have a place to to park when they need to visit the school, um and. You know, obviously for safety, looking at traffic patterns around that, there are areas to drive around there, and so it's not expected to be. Um you know, uh significantly disruptive, but. It it is a construction project in that area that we would need to to work with the school on.
And you know, we, I I had this conversation with Justin DiMarco about sort of how do we coordinate the carport installation? Clearly, the the bus traffic won't be impacted because it's going around in the front part of the school. But I know parents, when they're picking up their students, that there is some use of that sort of visitor area and. We talked about the possibility of trying to create a sort of a one-way single lane. If need be, to be able to allow for some passageway without interfering with the the work that's gonna be done. And and Byron will coordinate all of that with with the superintendent and your facilities director to make sure that they can minimize whatever impact during construction.
Thank you, back.
Yeah, I just feel supported by this whole process, I think, of course, we. Solar and power may might be installed at high school, but I am continually surprised by how many delays we have, okay. Part that that really left out first over in the city, but it was that, first time I looked at this was October of the year before last. Um and we said, and then we had one bucket that was, you know, presented to us and we said, okay, and then in May. Guys came back and you said, actually, if you're wrong, we have to go to the spirit of the here, um and so there are unknowns that seems surprising then. Um but it seemed like it was still, um and now here we are again, you know, many years later, and again, there are unknown things that you didn't see coming. That are holding in that the project, and this time it cost us money, um and I think that that, you know, we are not. For that, that's installation, obviously, um but it does, it that I understand that there are always reasons that you give, but I also feel. You know, incredibly supported by how this is going and how it always seems like there's a reason why we're getting things decided they're gonna get. So and now and now it's actually.
So I I I think I heard, I think I heard most of that, I'm not sure that I got um all of it, in terms of. In terms of the timing, I think there's a couple things that um and in terms of the the. Increase in PPA rate, the increase in the PPA rate is is exactly um correlated to. The the tax liability um that that we're experiencing as part of that, so it's essentially left hand, right hand, so it's. It's when, you know, if if the tax had come in lower as the assessed rate, the PPA rate would have been lower if the tax had come in higher. That would have been higher, so it's it's effectively a a straight pass through, um you know, based on the guidance of the town, so that's that's one piece. I think the other piece too is in making sure that the planning board and town facilities. Is on on board, we met with the planning board onsite, we walked through it, there were many different changes to. Um the canopy design um to optimize it for both production and also the transportation. Um and the incentive, so each time we do a an iteration like that. It requires significant engineering that affects not only the physical structure, but the actual foundations itself. Um and then that goes back into the model too, so I mean, at at this point, we've done all the engineering. Um we've done.
Can you hear me? Um my question is, when do these walk-throughs happen and when do the engineering, when do you change the design, can you hear me?
I I can, it just, the mic is coming in and out a little bit, but you said, when did we do the the updates to the designs? It was um during the during the process of the the back and forth process with the planning board, so. It was it was prior to the planning board approval is when we had the designs and then afterwards. Um you know, that there's more engineering that's done to meet what the planning board um has accepted and and has approved.
And the design, the the. I was just gonna say, the design didn't change from what your perspective. It's just how where sort of where the footings were, it it moved back a little bit, it just shifted around a little, but that then requires. Because it's a, it's it's a, it's a c- a facility, it required some additional engineering that they had to do to accommodate. What planning board wanted and how they wanted to look at the the information.
But so we thought that this law would start over the summer, right, the last time you met, you were gonna start all this work in June. Right, and so now, so I'm asking, you know, when did the work actually, when did you have this walk-through, when did all meetings with the planning board happen? And you know, why are we talking about this still, you know, a year after the first?
So so I let me, I can answer part of that question and and Byron might have more detail, but. Um uh initially, it was not contemplated that the site plan review would be as involved as it was. Um initially, it was, it was understood and actually, um town council worked with the planning board to to make sure. That the level of of review and analysis was appropriate within their jurisdiction and and candidly, I think the planning board. Added value to the process, for sure, um w- once they, it was determined what they needed and additional information that was required. We scheduled a site visit with the chair and we all went out, Greg Johnson was there, we were all onsite. And we were wa- talking through and working through sort of where things were gonna be placed to make sure it had the least amount of disruption. To two things, one to your use of the visitor parking, but also making sure it wasn't gonna impact. The is uh l- less vegetation.
Alright, okay, don't, this is a question, thank you, I'm just, I just, I would just like to say that, um I would just like to. I think it's it's too bad that it's taken this long, and I, I guess.
No, I just wanna have the conversations we do, like, I don't know, she, they, they.
Okay, I just.
My understanding, I mean, not completely subjective, but the planning board made decisions, I don't think that that was their, my personal feeling, their fault. But I do think that some of the questions that may be that impact the financial, from what I'm hearing. Like, um you mentioned about the trenches and there possibly ledge, well, that's not new information, that, I mean, that was known, you know. Years ago that there's a ledge, you know, underneath, so that was, I think is, is when you say that and frame it that way, it kind of feels like, wow, not really. Because really, that's not a bad stuff that we feel about our groundwork or in our town, so I think that doesn't feel very substantive as a as a reason or. Just explanation for cost change.
So so, okay, so so on that piece, the.
That's why, make sure that we have a good way of of getting rid of this material at the end of the twenty years, that can't be only our town, that's like. Yeah, delaying the that way either, I just don't think that that's true.
So we, sorry, I just want to give you a moment, please, Byron, um so are we as a committee? I don't really think we're gonna get any new information between now and the next two weeks, so really, it's either we don't support. Um or we go.
Is it gonna go forward, you know, at this level, or are we gonna have to go ahead?
And and maybe that's part of our our vote, is that we would say our vote is contingent on the financial numbers not changing as they're being presented to us. So I don't know if that that hinders, um you know. Negotiation that are still left, but I think what we're saying is that every time we get an update, the numbers go down and down, we're voting. So how, what kind of reassurances do we have as a committee? That we can say, confidently say, this is what we've been planning on moving forward, and that we're not gonna be sitting for two weeks. Or a month from now, the new numbers and more delays and now like that, to me, the the project is almost not viable. So how do we, how do we not?
So, yeah, so I think there's, I think there's a couple pieces to it, one is there's there's the PPA rate. You know, that that is in the model at the nine point eight cents, that's the PPA rate. Um that was reflective of the taxes prior to the bond, so when. When a change happens or requirement changes in in the agreement. That that adds cost to the project, the only place to to recoup that cost or to make the the. The model stay whole is is reflected in the PPA rate, so so that's the only place that there's a change, so if it's. So from our perspective, when we put a power purchase agreement in place, we have a standard PPA rate. And then there's a maximum not to exceed rate, and and that's actually in the agreement. If if it's over the maximum not to exceed rate, then Maynard can say, nope, I'm out. You know, so if we come back and we were to say, geez, there's there's so much ledge, like, we can't do. This trenching or we can't do it, or it's gonna be reflected into a price of X or Y, Maynard will have an option to. Not proceed, and we hope that that never happens because we've invested. Like heavily, heavily into this project in terms of the engineering, in terms of the utility approval, in terms of the incentive approval. And and engineering time, um so so we've already invested. Uh a lot of money and and in into the system, just on on our good faith. Um and I know that Maynard has as well too, um so, you know. That's part of it, the other piece of it is in just eyes wide open, it's a construction process, you project. And we have not yet done Doug. Just eyes wide open. It's a construction process, a project, and we have not yet done dug that trench. And so we try to have these guardrails which enables. Maynard to say. Yep, that's a, a fair cost. We're moving forward or no, based on our findings. Um. But. You know, to your point, after a year or more, more of working on this. Um. We're here and we're ready to go. Um. And so in terms of the, the two weeks. You know. I. We're, we're pushing against an April deadline for us that informs, you know, the, the project um. As well. And so. You know, it, it is time sensitive and. Understanding that two weeks we can probably make that up. But the other hand is too. Um. We definitely could benefit from the time before the ground thaws, I mean freezes. And that would be able to mobilize and, and move forward to the extent we can. Um, one. Option that, that maybe the. Committee might be comfortable with. Would be to vote, um, you know, contingent on. Uh, town council's approval of the agreement. And contingent on the superintendent's approval of the agreement. Um. And if those two points are met, then it would go to the select board and for their authorization. But that's. Um. I leave it to the committee, but that's, that would be a path forward that might enable us to. To order and, and. Get the, uh, the permit. Sooner than later, I guess.
Because remember, I, I just will say, I, I know Lisa, I mean, that we've been part of this, this like going back a thousand years, you're. You know, so I mean. A while ago, two thousand nineteen, and it's my, I feel like, I, I'm in favor of the project, but it's very thin. Very thin worn down favor because I feel like. It has evolved. In many ways. Uh, beyond what our expectation was. And, and I, so I don't wanna lose sight of all the effort, everything else, but. So I get favor of it, but I also am not. With, um. You know, where we are now finding ourselves. It seems. Maybe unexpected to be for us and maybe some things. Should have been more known or aware and presented that way. So, um, I'm gonna, I just wanna. Any other questions?
Um, the second question is more, I think right now, I think what we should do is get the agreement. I don't like with how much things have changed. I don't like the, uh, voting to receive a thing that we're not seeing. I think that at this point, it's been four years. And in the next few days, we can get a copy of the agreement. And we can vote on, we're actually writing. So. Um, but we're not voting on the agreement though. That's a lot of first. We're voting.
I think no. Right talk to endorse, that's the prevention version. But like saying that once. Once it's actually. In writing. Like, I feel like right now we're gonna be voting to. To judge this worst. And then we've seen over the last four years changes often. And so by, we haven't. Potentially, we can learn from judgment about. Watch, check to pledge. Uh, this is just like a, you know. That you can set up about what they, they want to get you to. And then once we get it set. And know we're supporting. We can support it, but we're. For it because. After four years, it seems we'll, we'll just rush to something that's not in writing yet. We just hope. Everyone else will work out. Spirit. How long is the contract? How many pages are we talking? Oh, sorry.
There, there's, there's two contract documents. There's a, there's a lease agreement, which is not significant. And then there's a power purchase agreement. I, I, I might suggest for your, I mean, I can go and look at the numbers, but you're probably talking about fifty pages total, something in that, that realm. Um, and there's a bunch of exhibits and that kind of stuff. I, I think, um. You know, I think at the last meeting, if, um, there was. Oops, sorry.
No, 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 the answer. For someone having a sidebar, go ahead, sorry.
Oh, at the, at the last meeting, the school committee authorized the superintendent to be the school committee's voice. And the superintendent has been involved in the. Communications and the correspondence and understanding the issues and supporting the, you know, the push at the town and. And Lisa Mead and I have been working very hard with Select on, just as, as a point of reference. Um, you know, the, the documents that we started with are power options model contracts. Which I like to say are about eighty percent of the way there. And Lisa hasn't, has worked very hard to make it. A, 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 a balanced and a good maner document. And while I. Totally um, welcome your review of the documents, there's been a lot of give and take. That the superintendent's been involved with as your representative. That I, you know, I would hope. You know, stay sort of a part of that process so that we can continue to move this forward. But absolutely, once the documents are finalized. You, you, you're certainly, you know, welcome to, to review the documents. Um. There's gonna be a lot of provisions. You go, what does this all mean, right? But that's fine.
Doing the actual documents and understanding all fifty pages and that's what we have the lawyers for. I mostly wanna know that I'm supporting something that's finalized and that's set. And that we're not saying we support something that a week from now we find out the. Um, rate has changed drastically before the trench comes in play and then it changes again when the trench comes in play. And I, it's more that I just wanna make sure. We have something set that we're agreeing to.
I, I think, I'm gonna go ahead and, and make a motion. Um, I do respect the fact that we did authorize Brian to be our voice at these negotiations. I don't. Personally, I don't find value in looking at the contract myself. It's who and I. Say, um, what the, what the contract pieces are, and I'm not gonna be, I'll be honest with you. So I, I'm gonna make a motion that we can just move forward or not. And I do think though, um. I would think. Long and hard about if there's increasing changes. Um, I would say that the school committee very much may not. May vote our authorization. So I just wanna make sure that that is known and clear, uh, that this, this timeline is numbered and presented. Um, we're taking that as what will happen going forward. If there's any change from that, it will be very disappointing. So, um.
Two-fold, right? The financial benefit involves the timeline.
Right, that's the benefit of time since, I mean, that will be, we're gonna hold it until the buyer on this. I know, I think we all, I think they know how disappointed we are. So I think we're gonna just, um, I will move to approve the long-term twenty-year lease and power purchase agreement with Select Energy. For the insulation operation and ownership of a rooftop and carport solar photo. This photo. Photo array to be installed at Maynard High School in time for drive contingent upon.
It's. Select board one, right?
North of the Select Board and to authorize the title of finished area to the best of you agreements. In second. Okay, any further discussion?
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm not a part of it until, uh, in February.
Okay, so all in favor? Okay, all opposed? Okay, motion is not fair. So I think at this point, it sounds like. Take away is to, um. Have more information. I think the point is. Get some more confirmation by the November second next school thing. Whatever, I don't know, you know, particular thing. I don't know if the contract will be signed by them, but.
Or just ready, like it's. Uh, I don't think it would be signed. I think this is.
No.
Um, I also wanted to, to, to gain my feeling from Brian negotiating. I'm fine with that from negotiation process. I just don't feel the need to run additional support. Without any additional covenant.
With the, with, with the school committee, um. Just, I, I'm just trying to keep the timeline moving, right? Because like, because we've had so many delays, right? And, and I'm not trying to rush you, but. Can you empower this, the superintendent with specific guidance, like the document before anything is. Communicated to the select board. The document needs to be final and the school and the superintendent confirms. The economics are as. Whatever, whatever you wanna say. I'm, I'm just wondering if they, if you're, if you're comfortable. And, and Brian, I apologize if I'm putting a whole bunch of weight on your shoulders, but, um.
The sequence of events. So, um, I think, I don't, I agree completely. Um. And, and I think that, you know, at any point we can include, especially the school committee meeting. If we need to have one, you know, work for that. So I would say the urgency really falls on, on, I mean, to get to that point where. We can confidently say, yes, this is the contract, you know, we just need authorization from Brad to execute it. And, um, if Brian could update. I mean, and we've already authorized him to do that so that we're not, you know, taking that away fast. Um, so does that sound like, you know, a good plan since it's been to update Brian, Brian provided us to us, then we will. Uh, hopefully we'll have some more firm by the next school meeting, which is another seven.
So.
They.
So we're still, we're still happening to.
So, so there's something that you're looking for. Let me just clarify is you wanna see the final contract documents that we are asking. This select board to execute, provided they have gotten from the school committee. A thumbs up on keeping the project moving forward because they won't execute without that. Right? But it would be the documents that would go to them. You wanna see those documents that have all the numbers filled in and all the pretty pictures and. All the stuff that Byron has a lot of work to get into the document right now, the site plan and all that other stuff. Um, you wanna see those documents as a final to give your thumbs up to the, to the select board. Is that, I just wanna make sure we meet your, your goals.
I will also recognize that we have one school committee, many members not here. So, um. You know, it is possible that, you know, might be different next time anyway. But I think it sounds like Kimberly is looking for some, I don't know if that's.
I wanna be able to say to the select board, su- support this agreement.
Right.
As opposed to support. And then of agreement.
So. So that's what you see, the final agreement, right? Okay, that's what I was just trying to get at. Okay. Understand.
Just, just so you know, this is like the first time we've been kinda lukewarm. Because for the last four years, we have resoundingly been total support of this. But and Beth knows because you've got the history, but it's gone away, it's come back and each time it doesn't look as appealing. So, um, that's where we are.
It's like how, you know. Potential interrelationship and so on as well, or other projects. But also doing with the fire station. So I mean, I, you know. Get a good place where. Make sure that we're. Sort of like this started before any other.
And if there's any other information that you want, again, to, I, I want you to have the comfort level. This is a twenty-year relationship and it's a, it's a big project, right? Um, please, you know, communicate that to, to Brian and I know he'll share that information so we can. Make sure that we get you what you need to feel comfortable that you know what it is that you're. Your. Thumbs upping to. Right? That you're giving the approval on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And also, uh, if we, for, I would, there was just a more thing on.
No, we need to move on. Well, we know. We are moving on. We are moving on. Okay. I'm gonna be, no, okay, we are moving on. Give that after. So. I. Uh, it kind of says eight point five on the, but you're. So I would, I do not, I do not look forward to that. Okay, um, thank you, Zach. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time. I would appreciate it. Any other questions that you would ask? Please feel free to, uh, a little get that. So I appreciate your time. Uh, I do love to, uh, welcome down. Recreation. Thank you very much for your patience. She's still. I know that you're gonna have to. So.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Great. Um, I wanna thank the school committee for inviting the recommission to, um, be here tonight. I know we have Drew Holmes from the recommission. Uh, I believe Tom Hesbok is in the audience live and in person. Uh, I'm not sure if John. Um, is also there. Oh, there he is. Great. So we have two live and two, uh, remote. So, um, in the interest of time, I think we can keep this fairly short, um, and maybe, um. Pick another meeting to come back and get any more detail. Uh, but Natasha has been, um, very gracious to be coming to our recreation meetings. Um, as well as our field usage task force meetings that the, um, the recommission has resurrected. Um, we've got a great group of people who are very motivated to put the, um. Field usage, um, and the fields. Sort of back into, um, discussion. Um, I think everybody at that table, um. Understands that we've, we've had some, um, challenges with. Getting organized about the fields and who's using them and maintenance and, and a lot of different issues and paying and, and all of those. And so. A few months ago, um, we sat as a group and. Really thought that the recreation commission should, um, and can be, um. The right organization to pu- pull all the parties together and start these discussions again. And really move forward towards some sort of plan and cohesion when it comes to using our facilities and, um, understanding, um. How these facilities need to be rested and maintained. And then what's there as far as monetizing the use of these facilities? So. Um, we've had a couple of meetings. Um, I think Natasha will agree that they've been, um, very productive. Um, they've been very open, um. And so what our plan here tonight is to. Present and talk a little bit about goals that the school committee and the recreation, um, commission can. Talk about and put forth, um, so that when we get together at these meetings, we can. Have these goals to work towards, um, and then again, uh, be able to collaborate with each other. Um, for the benefit of. All of the citizens and the fields and the, um, facilities so that. We can, um, present these facilities in a way that we're proud of, um, and in a way that, um. Is, is good for everyone who you, and fair for everyone who uses, um, these facilities.
Thank you. Um, I don't know if you wanted to go into, or I know you have John, John's raising his hand here. Yeah, yeah, that's right.
You want me standing here. Uh, just before we get into our agenda, sorry Denise. We've been, uh, since you've been discussing the, um, solar project. It came as a surprise to. The three of us. That you were thinking about putting that project, the carport. Right along the front field there. Where we as a recreation have been spinning our wheels. Trying to. Revitalize that, you know, try to get some information about that field. So I just wanted to put that out there that. We were trying to make some plans on. You know, what to do with that field out front. We had some. A study done recently that we have some information on that. The ledge that person could be talking about could be the foundation of their old high school. Uh, underneath there. We also found out that there's a major utility pipe that goes up into that field. Which would also run across the berm. Which would run across where you're thinking of putting.
So I don't wanna add it, but I know that. Survey just about you all, um. Justin has been part of this conversation with Select and there was. Uh, issue raised before about. How sun, and you do the sun. So he has been very much involved and did actually provide feedback and, um. Of how they should rework those, those aspects.
So we wanna just give, offer information on that. I wrote a little comment to put those link, about the silos of this town. And how, you know, people have to start sharing information if they have. I just wanted to make sure that. You know, you do that right up front, but we also have some.
Is that something that, uh? Justin. So I don't, again, I go back to Justin because he has been a part of. Talking about that. And I don't also just worry a bit about that survey. Um. That you get. I'm wondering, is there a different approach I suggest? For that, because I would see as one person that is that bridge. For both projects. So I don't know. Yours.
Yeah, I, I don't know in front.
Yeah, I, uh, well, so we just had a commission study. About utilization and options that. Well, so we just had a commission study about utilization options for that. And you would have thought that front and center in that study would have been, oh, by the way. There's going to be a bunch of solar panels going along this end, and you may need to offset the athletic service to prevent. Damage to the solar panels from errors, faults, but you would have thought that would have been an important feature.
Especially since we've been talking about it for quite a while.
Right, to mention. So, you've been talking about it for four years.
Not, not that long, no, two years.
People who were commissioned to do this study should have had that. So, if you'll use task force. Who's the recommission part of, should have had that information. Yeah, so then host will participate with us in those conversations, apparently even front and center in this discussion. That information should have been brought. And I think this gets to where Denise is talking about, recommission is talking about, what brought us here tonight. Is, we need transparency, we need a common vector of communication, not only about scheduling. But about all this, all these sources and assets and stewardship there are. Maintenance, what's the vision? What's the use? You know, how do you intend on having, if we want to use that for a copper complex. Across the way. You want soccer ball bouncing off your million dollar solar panel? Probably not. So these are, these are considerations that we might need to know if we're planning, how do you want?
Can I, can I suggest something, um. Very, very valid points, but because, and to me, I don't know if it's, if it's you, who maybe, uh, sorry, I shouldn't go into, just add this and maybe. Uh, have you been in touch with Justin about this survey that you have done? So I would. Uh, that's what I'm wondering, is that the best way to go, hey, school committee has been talking about this, you know, provide some. Of insight of how that project, you know, has informed or the survey has been. Informing that, again, I look to him as the bridge here and, um, I don't know, can you suggest?
Yeah, I, I'd love to make a comment on that because, um. This goes back to CPC funds that requested, uh, more than, I think, three or four years ago. To do irrigation on the front field. And when the recreation commission. I think it was last year or about a year and a half ago, went to the GPW to ask them, because they're the ones that have to actually do the work. Great, we have this money, we need for you to work with you on actually, you know. Using this money on irrigation, we were told that, um, they would not work with us to do the irrigation, they would not do any work until a study was done. So we had to go back to CPC and rewrite the grant. So that, that grant language included a study. Um, that got passed last year. The study, um, was started, I believe in January. Uh, we finally last week got, uh, a report. In that time, no one mentioned to us at all about the solar panel placement affecting the front field. So not only has the study been done and contracted and, and we've got to pay now for the rest of that. Survey, but now we've used CPC funds on a study that. I think now is completely moot and, and doesn't really help us at all do anything with our front field. So I guess my question is. Where, where do those panels end? And how much, and I just. Fired off an email to Justin asking him this question. So I'm hoping to get this answer tomorrow as we're discussing this is. How far into that front field do the panels go? And how, how much does it affect the usage of that field? And based on that, you better believe I'm going to ask him why he allowed us to go so far into this project. Without him mentioning that solar panels may, may affect the front field.
So I, I'll let you see on our main presentation, if you have that diagram.
We talked about this at a meeting to make sure, would it, the, at least where the soccer field is now, would it be impacted? By the solar panels. I think, we didn't disregard soccer, but.
Um, it shows, it shows the carport because we were very careful about it and also how the panels were set. Is that right? Ken Newhouse or somebody brought it up that we needed to consider the fact, uh, that field would be used for soccer. And so the way it's going to be, um, tilted is going to be so that they don't, cannot affect, is what we were told.
But, but, and that, that very well may be true. However. Part of that field study was, what do we need to do to fix the grading, fix the draining? That berm may not survive, for example. So in your diagram that's on the website, shows the solar panels, at least in a two dimensional space extending to the fence line. With, without, you know, I don't have, there's no reading in the elevation of the picture I had. Right? So it extends to that current fence line. Well, may, maybe that's going to become plate surface.
Okay, I mean, also just playing those, I think, here, and I, I agree that there's definitely a breakdown. But I usually say, hey, this is our school property. If you had plans for, you know, doing a study developing in this way. I would have certainly loved to hear about your survey and put that, you know, because absolutely. Um, those are questions that I think the school committee would, it's a planning for something that's on our. Our place. And I know we talk about how it might be utilized in the, in the search and the details of the survey and what was going into it. I don't think anybody in the school committee was really aware of the extent of. What those conversations were, um, and so, you know, it had already been heard, um.
Um, I don't know that that's a.
That we're planning for, what we are planning for.
Your time, he was unaware of the CPC study to irrigate.
Talking about developing.
That's what that report's about.
You just got the survey, right? Okay, so I don't, I didn't know when the survey was conducted. And I, I don't think we have seen, so I don't know, uh, prove the schools part in. Like, you know, informing that as well. I just think it's, it's a moment that clearly there's a, a mis, you know, misdirection here, but I don't. I'm not going to point fingers, I'm just saying that. You know, we obviously have the same intention here in mind to, how do we make sure that our resources are real time? With how we're using our resources, that we're not, we still mind on things that, you know, come to fruition. Um, and I think Denise, if you're, once you sent that information, I would certainly, um, you know. The, you know, please let us know and share with the school committee as well, because I think we've all been reassured. Uh, a couple of times that the array would not impact the field. That was a question that were, were asked, so.
Sorry, I'm just, the, west.
Did Justin do the study or any contract?
And was it just for that field? It was just in relations?
Yes. And Natasha, I, I, I agree that the quid pro quo and the communication back and forth, um. Is something that. This task force, i- it just shows the importance of needing to all come together and. Um, and communicating about what's going on throughout the town. And so I, I, you know, I think this just further. Pushes that point.
I think that definitely does, and I think it, what it sounds like, we have, everyone is, is, is wanting that same outcome. Right? Um, because I don't think any of us want this feeling of being product bar and. You know, are any of our efforts, well, we're on this, so any of our efforts really be felt like it's. That it made it anyway, uh. So. Point taken, I don't think we're going to solve that issue tonight, but I think what it sounds like, um. Is you're looking for reassurances that a solar or any project. Or how this would impact that, you know, really, really important.
Yes, but I think it goes to a larger point of, um, you, you're correct, the school owns that property. And so I think we need to share that study with. You all, um, and then. I think there needs to be some approval process, not just with the recommission, and I haven't discussed this with our group either, um. We can't do anything on that property without approval from the school. But, we have the study, so we can certainly share that with you all.
Is your, is your designer, your solar project designer aware of, of. Fact that, that field was being. It's, do they operate setbacks or any guidelines as to how to?
They reposition that. That's where one of the, as I, wants to make sure that, uh. That, no, it's not going to be there for, now, why are they exact, they also have, no. But I think that's part of the span for planning forward, but, um, is to ensure, and again. Justin, Justin was very much part of that conversation, water run, like, like shady on the field, you know, all of those things were. Were talked about. I don't know what to extend, but, uh, was the question about soccer ball that it hit, what's happened? I didn't ask that question. But I, I imagine that they need to have some level of durability because, when you leave and, you know, um, it's going to last for twenty years.
I mean, I remember there was a conversation about what if it gets, gets caught underneath, I mean, there would be, yeah.
Justin was so involved, you would have thought he would have given that, oh, by the way, studying people.
Or permanent destruction. Now, along, you know, the perverts, these sort of, that could essentially, I don't. Like, I'm not, I'm not constructing, I certainly don't do. A field, if it's full. But I wonder to prevent. Being able to put a viable playing surface there, have construction there, or prevent degrading of the field, so that you could actually put a playing surface there. So. I trust that there's a lot of people thinking about this, all of the property, or making sure that things are okay. But I do wonder what, how do we limit us in terms of what potential uses of that space in the future if there's. You know, I don't know what's underground, this trench, and can you dig it? Are, are we contracted, organizing to have equipment there, because there's. Somebody else's property is down there, right? And all these kinds of things. Maybe wonders, okay, that field really never been big enough to buy it. For a field, or the, whatever you want, right? Um, that's all I, and I don't, not educate us to tackle.
I, I also.
I share a permanent structure of one.
I, I think you want to also add that. Project has had many iterations, uh, you know, obviously with the big metal, you know. Then it went to a, a silver, right, that was, uh, in a different location, uh, and then there was tree, you know, sir. And there was at one point, uh, at one point, it was like, there was. Could, it might not be viable, we weren't going to be able to do it at all. So that's where we're seeing thousands of things is that. Uh, at what point is this possibly not, I'm the, the vendor, right? True, um, and we've already explored in just a few, that's when we started that, we need to know. Um, all, a lot of vendors now. So, so that's where it gets started at the point was that they get all, all vendors in some level of, right? Um, and so we've been just kind of finding out where the best footprint for that has, has to be, and it doesn't seem to be any great. Place, um, but this seems to be the place that has, landing and it's moved around, you know, so.
Again, in, in, in our, my personal mistake is in for this project, I can spot it by that inside here. By Chuck, that's, that they, their solar panel, all, yeah. It's the, it's about the goal, it's about setting the goal. For understanding, in these flat spaces, there are new flat, new spaces we have. What are your goals for recreation, for the division? For those spaces. How can we as the recommission work with not only the spaces? Spaces that are conservation rooms, the space that's left over, the United Conversation about. Putting all those. Resources together, putting all those goals together, putting all those projects together, leaving this for us to. Coming up with a terminal that homestically, in one place, or the avenue ahead of the cycles. And that really is the point of this, it wasn't to. Pound on the solar thing, but that was just a, another ah-ha, oh, yeah, another.
So. Or, or remembrance that coming, it's, it's confirmed, when we were doing the high school. And that field was put out front, it was specifically for a practice field, it was never meant, it wasn't going to be big enough to be. Anything, you know, like permanent or anything like that, it was just going to be a practice, that's why check is on, so I don't know. So you're talking about doing something different, were they?
No, not, right, you're talking about wanting to use it as an actual. Practice, unfortunately, because of the, because the, the contractor. Didn't. When you, what we understood, the contractor was supposedly. Actually remove. The foundation and put. But that, the Bible, that you can, you can go out and look and experience, something, see where there's grass and where there's not, and go take a Google Earth image. From one ten, and see the old building, right where the grass isn't. Right, so they didn't prepare the service and kids, we've had kids have, they've had legs gashed open by like. These are the metal rocks that are vibrating up, and it's just, it's not a safe playing surface.
But I just, I wasn't sure if we were aiming to.
No, so, our aim is to make it a safe playing surface, for overload, training, deal hot, but whatever, whatever you use. It, it suits it, but which was part of the study, what can be done in this space? What is the service area that's viable? For use and rehabilitation, or irrigation, et cetera, et cetera. So now I want to know, in that whole study. I didn't solar panel shift what is considered now viable in people's face. Is it now smaller, is it bigger? Can I know, can I know, and get two soccer balls this way, and one this way, can I get a practice football? What, what, what did that do to this picture? Because in that fifty thousand dollar study, there's zero mention. Of this project.
If I have the availability of that, you, there, you, you rest together.
Yeah, it, it, it's a lot of the major.
That's what, so. In rest, but rest, I, I think we were talking about. Might not be able to, to be sustainable, but minimal.
For example, tracks have often played.
Denise, do you want to go on? I know that we've had polls, and I, I have nothing here of what they are, but I do know if we wanted to kind of start with them, but I know they were pretty important. Uh. For everyone, so I don't know, to mention more, should go on.
So I think, one interesting thing I have to see about, as we try to work on, instead of moving forward to collaborate. Is, I think we need some clear structure for the communication. And that, I know when we had a talk, talk about this, for, you know. I tried to think, how is it going to impact soccer, like, talk about shade on the, the grass, and the balls and things. And I knew you guys weren't doing the survey at times, you know. And yet, due to like, not totally grasping both sides, I didn't understand you meant, I bring construction equipment in. And changing the grade, and it never occurred to me to think of like, like. I, I wasn't, I wasn't remembering to think about the two sides together, like, you need to find something, you know, something like Justin knows. To be that way, or to like. Really include the, I mean, we should.
And that's precisely. Yep, and that's precisely why, um, you know, there, there's a piece missing to bring everything together. And we recognize that, um, which is why, you know, we have the original field usage task force, um. That. Sort of, I think dismantled or thought we had come to the end of, of whatever discussions had to be had, and then we started talking as a group, as a commission. About all of these different factions and all of these silos of things happening. And so. You're right, we need to all come together for that communication, and if the recommission can do that, we're happy to do that, um. And I think, we, we're also trying to understand what communication has to happen from both sides. Um, of all of these topics. So, yeah, I mean, Natasha, starting by coming to our meeting and us coming here and bringing in conservation. Um, those discussions, the three things that we've talked about are, um. And Natasha, I'll go very quickly through some of the things we talked about the other night. Um, some of the goals that we'd like to set is central scheduling. So we have three organizations within Maynor that own fields or have responsibility for fields. We have the schools. And the other night, we identified the, the pieces of property that the school is responsible for. We have the select board. Identified, I believe, three properties, three parcels that the select board is, um, responsible for approving usage of. And then conservation, they have a number of parcels that they are. They have a number of parcels that they are, um, responsible for approving usage of. Uh, we have one scheduling system and that's the schools. The other two entities approve. Someone calls up and says, yep, you can use it, go ahead. So. Having one place where all of the fields. Are housed and and we can see who's using it when. That seemed to be our first priority is just getting a handle on who's using these parcels and how often. Once we have that down, then we can figure out, well, how do we take care of these fields? How can we maintain them? How can we rest them? We can't rest them if we don't know who's using them. So the school's uh scheduling system seems to be the best option, only because it's, it's. It's the most organized. It's an actual online scheduling process and the other two entities don't have one of those. So one.
She was at the meeting on Monday and she, uh, was very favorable of supporting this with this left board process as well. Uh, and I know that she did bring it up last night at her fair meeting, her members comments. Um, because there is that that. To get everyone on the same page and I know Mike and Colleen both have been working. On some aspect of this, so we've been trying to Julia Flannery and.
Things have just gotten away inside, so.
Okay, all right, so it sounds like there's. Anything with Julie and Mike and Colleen, like, I know that every party has been expressed interest that this is where. Um, my conservative operational perspective, this is what it is, I don't know the depth of. Uh, what that, does that add something to? Now it's towards a pre-bait or anything. Well, we didn't talk about. So obviously there's no money. On the weekends, there's no, you know, there's no, but schools aren't a percentage by some, you know, some. Action or having.
So potentially as opposed to. If we added the. Rec condition of the time to include the other games that we have. And maybe they all. I guess it's. And it's a great job.
Calendar is available online. Our facility calendar is online for anyone to see, so they can look to see who is doing what, where and when.
Okay, all right.
But it's, they were, they were, they were asking, yeah, things like practices, the, the other piece was. Endeavors through Justin is made it sick, but when does he, when does he know where he's going, where he can know there and. So again, we don't need it, we're solutionary, and here at this point of them, the point is, we'd love agreement to have to use the leverage, the MLS. Five is there. And then bring in all the other. To give it a map.
Yeah, I think that, I think, uh, I know Mike's already agreed to that, so it sounds like. So I have a school was.
And then, no, I said that, it's Colleen.
Thank you, I'm the software minister as well.
Yeah.
Other duties as assigned. Um, but if we can add other administrators and I'm sorry, I I missed some of what, uh, Brian, you were saying, um, the audio was cutting in and out, so my apologies. If I'm, um, repeating anything, but I think one of the things we talked about was adding users. To sort of help alleviate Mike and Colleen having to do everything, um. I think that was one of our goals as well. I'm not sure what the possibility of that is.
I would just need a list of the properties and who you want the approval process to go to, because we wouldn't be part of that approval process. Um, and as long as they're set up and if they need to hold a little quick training, we can do that.
Great, and that's one of the other things we, you know, we also want to bring into this is, uh, levels of approval. And if, you know, person A isn't available, then person B approves and and so on and so forth, so that there's some accountability of who's using the fields. And then really quickly, once we have a good idea of who's using them and how often, then we can talk about maintenance and resting them. And then the last piece of that is, is of course, you know, all of our favorite subject, which is, do, who do we charge? Do we charge everybody? What do we charge them? Is there a tiered system? And so we very much want to be a part of that process. Um, and have it be a process that's amenable to everybody, um, and one that is, um. A conversation that's done very professionally and, and you know, we're not fighting about it and everyone leaves the table feeling as if, um. Everyone is being, uh, charged fairly. That's last.
Yeah, no, I I know that the, uh, financial transactions, because the, when the other parts, you said, and we talk about the report and we, the report. And in the works, I know that, um. Yeah, does that sound? Okay, we'll have another version out, but I, again, it's, it's, it's happening. I think it's just more about how to make sure that it's a sustainable thing, that no one is putting a lot of. Every effort into it to run it every day, it's set. Um, I think that's the foundation of trying to build that level of trust of what's, you know, what's going out. Um.
And I ask what's being, what is being created, created that last piece? What are you gonna have for next week? Okay.
Yeah, this will get to honor.
So something different.
No, I think it's just that, just getting that up here, um. And then just say like, thank you for, for meeting here and. Sharing your feedback and I think everyone probably want to recognize that. This is gonna be a learning curve all the way. And so patience is. Some good intent is really what they're all. Commit to that. I think. You make a lot of progress, but I want to make sure I'm going through the scoop of media, just.
I I wanted to give Chuck an opportunity, yes. No, just myself, but I'm, I'm. Happy that we're having this conversation because the recreation commission is so important. In years past, a huge, huge contributor to, to the kids in Maynard and then kind of waned a little bit, so I'm so excited.
We're back.
To have that. It's perfect, it's great.
That's so bad, okay.
Well, I think the, I think from a perspective, I love the beer, even though. North Rust feel like we're doing our job as a record. You know, if you have. Goals. And some of these things may be just lame enough, right? Like, we want to use the memory of. Uses it that we admit now is is that as well, right? I mean, we're talking about field there, but also gets into. It's not just the grassy part, it's also. The nice wooden parts too.
Yeah, we talked about basketball.
Yes. Yeah, there's other assets that are, that are involved, you know, people all. Tennis sports. Et cetera, so. But there's opportunities for sports entities or classes and training classes, et cetera. Understand what assets and sources. But all things like. In your goal as a school committee and helping the student athlete develop or. What are your goals? How can we help facilitate those? If we're helping facilitate all that integration, serve your heart.
I think that was a case I heard your, your conversations about, uh. Is training. And I know that that has been something that we have as a school committee, um, you know, advocated for budget perspective. But I would say any, any, any ways that the rec aspect. Um, as a board of reputations for that, that can only help support, uh, our, our. Or, you know, having an athletic chip. Because it would be not us finding a defining home.
Yep, that was a great one.
Uh, the other thing that I, I think, which was brought up and Denise alluded to tonight was, we have those conversations about. Or these, I know it's a very sensitive subject. For everyone and I, and I, you know, appreciate Brian's effort last time trying to bring something forward, but. I think what we really recognize is that there needs to be more thought and conversation. I think if, you know, having you all kind of like. Be part of that, um, tiered approach. And, uh, you know, lending your, your support, uh, or feedback or leaving that however way. That's the only way I see that viable, with also this left board as well, once they get on board and. Uh, you know, their kills, because right now they don't charge for their kills. So I think that that is the larger, how do we bring consistency to, uh, all of our, our open assets? And I think the other part two, which is down row, which, um, will be important is. Um, the, and you know, trying to follow the procedures that are, that are not very clear across, you know, our PK or. Whatnot, so those are the things, right, that comes to my mind. My, one of my primary goals would be to get the field ready for enough shape that we. Can multiple, want to maintain the money. If we put money into something, I want to make sure that we don't destroy later, like, to make good financial decisions. But then from the more I know, it's that, I want to maintain the, you know, put enough conditions that we can make our money. Renting to like tournaments, bug teams. Other events like that, so that then we can subsidize or provide access to the kids in town who need it for things like. Do soccer, you stop ball, boys and girls stuff. Um, girl stuff, like, so that our students can have physical activity outside of the world.
No, I just, so then, you know, I've touched on it really much, it also, there's something that's a more subtle way of having contact as a part of it. So like, how is that ever gonna establish that here or is there a condition we can have that, I was gonna say like.
Uh, so I think that's, that has been an important thing, it's just setting up like that, reoccurring.
You know, we do have. Uh, but we have in the past. Represented.
I just saw her last. Vice versa, usually I have like, usually around the same.
We, we, that's something.
Yeah, that's a good player, I expect them to say suggest, okay, so the real liaison. That, that. Works. Work, there's a lot to stay in discussion. With our subcommittee. Or some other. Recognize that. Stop, but it allow, allow us to collaborate.
Next question, so, uh, because these different factions, um, the recreation commission, is it? For the, this being, um, skiing program in the basketball, what, what are your main focus? Those are those. House club takeover, the basketball, but then, so there's back and forth that I don't know exactly what you got.
Yeah, so we, yeah, so we have, um. Uh, and Mary, to be completely honest, over the last five, six years, we've struggled to, for, uh, we've struggled with what our identity is. Um, we're not a department, we don't have staff, we don't have budget. We're three fourths, maybe five, once in a great while volunteers, um. And so we've tried to run programs in the past, um. Without staff, that's one person running a program like basketball program, it just didn't become, it wasn't viable. It wasn't sustainable, so unfortunately, we had to let that go for now. Um, our goals as a commission have always been to be able to run recreation programs, just like every other town around us. Every other town around us has a recreation department and they run great programs. We do not. Fortunately, we have the Boys and Girls Club who is able to run programs. Um, so, you know, the kids in Maynard have a place to go to have organized, um, sports, um, in different ways. We would love to run all kinds of programs, we'd love to run programs for seniors, we'd love to run programs for adults, um. And for kids and and high school kids who maybe don't play varsity sports, so we've got lots of goals and lots of things we'd love to do. Um, but we're for people with full-time jobs and so. We've had to kind of let the program thing go. Um, we, we do have our ski program back, only because we've got a couple of great parents in town who are now running it with our support. So yay, we've got skiing back, but we had to, we had to figure out how we can sustain that once they're done running it. So our ultimate goal was to somehow have a staff member, whether it's shared or full. Um, we envision being able to share that with lots of other committees like Conservation. Um, who also probably need he- help with, with a staff person. Um, and we've gone to the town and, and to date, we've been unsuccessful getting a staff person, so, um. If we can have staff, then we can do more. So for now, our role, we believe, is facilitating these discussions and facilitating, um, uh. Some way of, um, organizing. All of these entities who use all of these facilities. To present fields that everyone can be proud of and to hopefully monetize it in a way so that we can, they can be self-sustaining. And so that's where we're at right now.
So just thinking about next steps, um. For, so it sounds like you, I think you have gotten our, you know, more comfortable to, you know. You're on the right path, right? And, um. Then I know that you're meeting with, at some point soon, with a select board, right? Uh, but that was a conversation. So I think that.
I just asked her what the next meetings are and so there'll be a meeting in November that will go and present what we're doing. Um, I think I'll be at Conservation next week, so the, the traveling meetings continue. Um, and then we will book our next, um, field usage task force for November. And so, you know, hopefully it's about consistency and if we can consistently meet and then work on a little bit each time we meet. Um, then eventually I think we'll get there.
And I really, I think Julia has been fantastic as well. I, she's been really, Julia the Conservator, she's just gone and, um, she's. She's taken this and run with it, so just amazing. Um, the other thing I just want to quickly point out, I have to talk about the actual like. Consideration, and I, I know I mentioned it at one point in our private meeting, but it's important to also share is that. Um, they need to be thoughtful about when we want to introduce that, because we need to give, you know, if there's a discussion about endorsing what these are. Um, there are also budgets for other organizations that have a plan around that, so I think. It's almost like maybe working backwards a little bit, um, considering if that's, if that is a goal for this year. That we want to work towards, um, how does that plan out? Or is it something maybe that's maybe next year or whatnot? So I just want to maybe throw that out there as, you know, you know, get it next work. Anyway, just to put it out there right now.
Approach to recommend that, and it's, it was. Begin with, begin with in mind, it's exactly what we're talking. And we would like to have, like, staying or understanding to work. That's the, that is, I think, a common end state. Uh, step one in my eyes was believe data. Without, without accurate data, understanding what. Who's using the field, when and why and what. Yep, we, I, we don't, so we do have that, but that's. Yep, we, I, we don't, so we do have that, but that's. But, but, once we have a shared system. Now we can all, now, we have object, we have, we don't have server data. We now have objective data that we mine from the shared system, right? The people, we see who's reserved and we can, can hopefully objectively measure whether or not they're actually using, I'm just reserving and we didn't foul up, right? But, but we, we start gathering objective data and saying, okay, well, we use various times, these organizations are, these many hours. Put this load on the field and result in this thing connected. When you start, you start putting together a store, and then you can start pricing out. And then applying dollars to then looking forward, estimating, okay. Figure something like just Mark on our staff, but who's an expert in these things. You know, when we lay out a data, it'll, it'll help us then say, okay, here's the, here are the data, it's like. Here's a motion, structure, here's a minimal budget, here's what you spent. Knowing what you guys are spending. When it was hours spent on deals. We put all this data together, now you can have a whole package. Yeah.
And then. Building around that, making it minimal. Um, and then bonus for.
That's correct, right. And then understanding what your goals are to facilitate that. That prioritizes the needs, right? Here's the school's needs for the priorities for support. There's communities, right, there's a list. Here are the external needs that we want to generate. I have data, objective data that is measurable or equal way.
So, like, there's a challenge that we ran into. But use football. Got the soccer, so they were outside on it. So those have all been incorporated into that central.
Correct.
And outside components that maybe don't. I think it was like passive use. One of the next factor that was, um, discussed around, so at least we'll figure out what is that passive. It could be, well, it could, that's what, I think you, that's what I'm saying, like, damn, I'm trying to, you know, do the ball like that. But not like, damn, I'm gonna bring in team out to go do some, you know, um, ball.
Exactly.
Teams coming to the field like this regularly with them. Are we thinking, what is our next step for us that you're, um. Going to, so I know we're meeting, there's a government, you're scheduling that.
Yeah, I get a, I get a fun day in, in November for our next meeting, um, and that really, we really want Mike to be there, um. And, and Colleen's welcome to come as well, because I think we, we're going to focus on the scheduling piece of it and nail that down. And then we want to start to put together process around scheduling, um. And so, you know, finding a day that's good for everybody has been, you know, challenging at best. So our, our, you know, the next thing is, um. Conservation Commission next week and then s- uh, Select Board to present our ideas to Select Board and then trying to find a November meeting date.
All right, and then you, you send, um, send the school thing or me and I can circulate between the survey and, um. We receive and then, you know, we can have folks review when that, when that looks like. Um, and then maybe let's plan on having. Some point with term, you know, um, that we just feel like, kind of like a check in, like, hey, what's. What's going, we, you know, having effective progress, um, what areas are still served and. You know, kind of keep it very, you know. Structured, but not too structured, but that you've been touched in a way that, um, you can reach out to us obviously at a point. I'm glad.
Just, just for, uh, reference, John, for number this, he's been here as long as I have. The, the Recreation Commission, they used to have a budget, it was to be a staff person. She was part-time, but she was, and that's when we had the. You know, the summer programs and stuff like that, the Recreation Commission. Very vibrant.
So Julia, um, we were looking at the parcels. On the high school parcel, uh, the diamond. Um, it's like an weird shape, but cut out just for the baseball. Things on the side, but then it's like. Do you, when they built the high school, was there any?
Yes, Chuck.
I mean, if anybody knew, we're, we're in history for anybody, sorry. But Chuck, do you know, um, with the high school, if, um. The parsing out of that parcel with the baseball, like there's a, there's a parcel, it's just this ball. And do you know if there was any reasoning for that, the way that it was cut in the high school was? Built, was it?
You're, you're breaking up. Could you say that again?
Um, do you have any historical, um, understanding, uh, or knowledge about the way that a parcel for the high school baseball field? Was created when they go to the new high school because it's set on its own parcel, just as a ball field?
So the. That field had been nestled back in there. You used to have to. Cut through the woods to get through it and the woods were removed to build the high school. Um, and then when the high school was constructed. The old high school was torn down where the new field is in front. Um, we were warned to try to keep groups from using the field for at least two years and preferably three. So the turf could get a good start, um, and, uh. That was an uphill battle because it's a pretty low chain link fence and pretty easy to get over, um. The front field, the back baseball field. Uh, used to be there, uh, that's where the field hockey field is behind that as well. Um, you used to have to walk through the woods to get to those fields. When the new high school was constructed, the woods that obstructed the view to that field were all taken down in order to build the new high school. So now it appears to be one continuous parcel. But it used to be a separate field parcel, woods, and then the old high school in front of that, so.
It was, it's not actually connected, sorry, to the high school.
Now it appears to be connected, but it, it used to be quite separate.
Visual, how it's set up, how it's segmented. It looks like they just carved out a space that it literally the shape of the baseball field, right? Right, and everything around that is its own parcel. And it was not clear in the map and the GIS system, why did they carve off the baseball? They were not just saying it's the entire parcel. But when, uh. Chuck's saying makes sense that perhaps before, it was just a single hat to that baseball. Then the baseball diamond, but then everything else.
So the more recent side makes sense. Why they built the baseball field in the middle of the woods?
I know it's late, I wanna.
We got an hour behind.
Yes, yeah, so.
I just have a one clarification on the makeup of the square commission. It's three individuals working full-time, one retired.
You do a lot though.
You get double time, double credit. For the audience that you, uh, take care of.
Um, and it's. I appreciate, thank you for your time and so speaking, uh.
Oh, she's there.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much, and I just think keeping the commu- the lines of communication open, I think, um, I, I think good things will come.
Okay, yeah, they endure, I, I saw it.
Aye. Thanks, everybody.
Wayne can be really short.
Oh, you know, yeah. Yeah, so, um, I know we've been hung out for, for meeting, um, I think. Are you able to, yeah. Very executive, the executive summary, but also, um, knowing that we will revisit. In our, in a budget subcommittee, get to be scheduled, and then we can certainly bring together initial information or questions there. On your, of your presentation. Final minute version.
Wayne, you there?
I am here, I'm having trouble hearing, but I'm here.
Hi Wayne, uh, if you're able. Uh, the school committee, um, I, I know we're really late and I don't want to hold up. Any more of our, everyone's time by, um, the highlights of what the end of the year were that you identified as. Concerns, uh, kind of like a very executive, executive summary, and then if anyone has any questions, we'll talk about it in our project submissions.
Did I hear you want, you wanted me to give you the highlights? Is that what I heard?
Do, do what it was you were talking about earlier.
Yeah, okay, absolutely. Well, the highlights is we, we finished the year, um, at budget. Um, there was a, um. A net remaining of twenty-eight thousand eleven dollars. Um, and tho- that was left to cover the FY twenty-three invoices. That were left outstanding to be paid in FY twenty-four. Uh, other than that, um, we spent, uh. Twenty-one million, six, three, eight, three, nine, seven of our twenty-one, six, 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 four, oh, eight. And, um. Um, other than that, there were some expenses that were, uh, um. That were moved out of school choice into the operating budget and, um. So we finished the year under budget. And the format is what you've been used to and what we, I have presented to you the past two and a half years or so. Um, the grants are all in good shape, uh, revolving accounts are all in good shape. Um, and so, uh, we were very lucky to, um, come out of FY twenty-three. Uh, in a positive manner and all of our accounts are in good shape. Uh, concerns, um. You know, there's a new, uh. New personnel at the town and there was some, some delay in getting the data, so I was, as we talked in the budget subcommittee. I would have liked to have gotten you this report a little sooner. And also that was in conjunction with me also having to do the end of year report that goes to Desi. But, uh, other than that, um, it's not too much later than what I did it last year, last year. I think I also gave you this report in October. Um, but most of all, uh, things are looking good.
Thank you very much, Wayne, um. I'm going, unless anyone has any super burning questions for this, um, I would just say, you want to email myself or Mary. So we need to have a budget subcommittee, we'll, we'll bring those to, you know, we'll, we'll add this to that agenda and we can, um, go in depth. But Wayne, thank you for giving us out of the red, um, as, as much as possible and, um. Yes.
Yeah, stuff, thanks for that. Yeah.
And for increasing the transparency of this.
Yes, this is a really great report, um, that you need to do, I, so. Uh, filters and transparency, thank you for the transparency. Okay, Wayne, go to bed.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you very much, Wayne.
You're welcome, take care.
Um. Channel the word. Just by laying what is actually important, CBC, or I, I said rolling now, well, let's see, we'll work on with that. Um, there will be some efforts to change, we require more. Uh, for the designs because there are, uh. About it's very. On the code. Uh, for that, um, necessity arrested. And it's a great thing, yeah, so, uh, because. Like which of the priors, or. Went for different interpretation, we're going to be, our patient that, uh, to see. Make sure that restroom and storage, which are allowed, yeah. Um, can use designs for that. Doesn't mean we're going to construct it right away, but at least we'll have designs. Down in the bathroom, we will. So that's kind of.
It was like an extra seventy-two thousand dollars or something like that.
Uh, there's some information that, uh, Phil's been working on, just again, in the past twenty-four hours, that the select interest says the summer and, um. Formed with state inspector, uh, town inspectors. A lot of it, just to get everyone to the same page, understand what is the meaning, and then also separately, even with the C about, um. How do we, and I have a communication that we're gonna, I'm doing with them, just kind of. They just, they know it's on the radar, they expect that this will last for three times. I'm hoping it's non-event, I think just going to be voted at the next meeting, but I don't know. What, you know, how they're going to interpret, um. They, I can see it was, it was pleasantly surprised that members to say. They always intended the restaurants to be included in the design, so maybe the, the bar won't be as high. I think it's just a matter of, um, getting their official, you know, written confirmation.
But that's okay, good thing. So I guess the, the clarifying question is, will it maybe allow us? More money than the two-hundred thousand that they gave us for design, or will it allow us to use the balance of about a hundred and thirty thousand? Up to the two-hundred thousand for that.
I think from what I understood is that it will allow us to tap into that already allocated money, so we're not asking for, for part of that. Uh, because if you remember on the, they said it was just like a fraction and then they had that other column for ineligible expenses. So we're going to be trying to shift, um, that piece. What's the next thing that we have? Um, for, so the next thing, uh, Mike, now that the notice of interest has been accepted. And, um, my area is going to kind of take that ownership of that process. Um, and then, you know, we, for the, I bet at some point, we will be, you know, voting on, on application before it needs to go. To the CDC, um.
And meantime, Phil is also doing more.
Right, so it's sort of thing. Um, you don't have to do anything for Phil, um, that's the design case, so that's already. Fun, just kind of making sure, um, whatever expenses we need are covered and not. Right, so this. Right, right, we need to, we need to, uh, we need to get confirmation of the, the funding piece because the bathroom or restroom. Is required now, and, and so it's not an optional kind of component. But also, on top of that, the CK, um, brands of the state do seem to. When it says that if the restroom, like recreation, if there's a restroom and storage supports preparation. Space that, like a beaches or pools or whatever, that it is sort of. allowable. So we're just going to, again.
So we're going to spend five, four, five now.
Um, I would say we have a, I don't know how good we are, I think we, we're, the longest we can on, we're second this. See if we have enough information for them to feel comfortable to provide some amendment or something.
Um, I was just thinking, enough and tall, like yesterday, so I thought we're gonna make a decision. Of school committee about what we have to do or not.
This is all breaking news, past twenty-four, um, hours, past what it was that. But, uh, the designers chosen, interest. And then, uh, engaging about the restroom conversation, and then they actually already were engaging with Phil to. Said, hey, this is what I'm seeing, and I do projects elsewhere, but what jurisdictions have to. They, they interpret this code, certify that. It's a lot of that to. Phil's been doing a fantastic job representing us and trying to get all these people on the same page. Uh, so, and Ryan Lawson for all that work as well, um, so, um. I will kind of, I think that's brilliant, just, you know, town voters, thanks to everybody. Uh, parents, seniors, teachers, administrators. Uh, parents, seniors, teachers, administrators, the town soys, uh volunteers, kids. You know, uh, yeah, yeah, I think it was just, uh, it was a really great turnout. And uh I think that was just fantastic that, and then just during the students trying to continue that conversation or interest in. You know, engaging her, um, it just was, it's really great, so I got very excited about um how that turned out again. I think that um. November seventh.
And there are.
Yeah, um, so that's, that's all I'll 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 touch on my own.
Uh, nothing that is, uh, the the vote is the main thing, and I want to make sure people are aware of the November seventh. The polls are open from seven AM to eight PM, all the precincts are at Fowler, you can do absentee ballot, mail in ballot. You can actually show up at the town hall up until twelve o'clock on the sixth. Um, to do early voting, so it all different kinds of options, so no excuses for anybody to um go and vote. This is the only pot hole that there is, so it's just one quick um check mark.
Specifically say thank you to Josh, because.
I think the whole presentation, even uh people that got up, um. Um, and that spoke, you know, spoke about it, um, he did a great, great job.
Okay, so then. I personally had my lip, I want to pull out, so. You wanna uh basically say what they are and I'll circle them to, yeah, uh. So, um, anything that's related to one or two. Just a lot of them, those are doing taken out?
Yes.
And are those things that you want to discuss in the whole school committee? I'm wanting, but if you have questions on it, you want to bound to the house subcommittee. So then. So anything that's associated with. I'm very sending over. So, yeah, it's a kind of, it's.
Oh, I forgot one.
I want to say, I thought we did that. That was the, that was the schedule that I had done, did that, right? Oh, you have gone, okay, all right, but into the exhibit, but I was like, I think it's the exhibit that I sent you. Okay, yeah, then I would want to let out. Mary, do you have anything that you?
No, I was okay with just about all, I just had a couple of little tweaks, but I was good with everything. That maybe by being able to edit them and each one of them and then like. I was just wondering what the what the path forward is without having discussions. I think that's what she's asking, exactly, because there are some things that you put on sidebar that we can look at anytime.
They're all kind of tied together, like it's one or two, kind of, it might involve a bunch of them, that's part of it, so. So I, the next step is let's remove those and remove ones that are are left there. Um, let's do the vote first and then we can kind of talk about where to go next, but there, it's just a different thing, I thought we were just, I would be back. We just come in front of the school committee, we'll talk about them, that's kind of what we.
Just wondering, is there something that you wanna, like, today you wanna share feedback? You wanna share feedback like?
It would be like, anything that's pulled out, it goes along the process.
Okay, so I think our concern is that going through the normal process with, you know, sixty, seventy percent of the policies. Is so cumbersome that, like, the normal process is gonna work. I think that we've we've established over the last few years, that given the volume of policies that we need to reconcile. Having long discussions about each policy, two different, all that, we're not getting through anything.
Because, and we talked about having a separate policy meeting, and then there was like, no, we shouldn't do that, but it sounds like we're really good to do that, it's have a separate. About policies, figure out, we're not deciding like, how in this process and what else, and it's like, we're making sure we're all thinking the same thing.
To some extent, if we're gonna have, like, there's no point in our policy subcommittee, being in the burden of policies, if we're not already on that. Like, we went to a consent our policies subcommittee last November, December, January. And so if we have like a ten month delay in discussing them, it's sort of like, why are we? The public, the way that, like, we, the policy subcommittee, they're ready, these policies are ready. Some policies definitely, probably almost the year, the problem is, we don't have time to hash out, there's like. I mean, I have like. But maybe you have to go each week, in which case. Why don't we do one, which I think is just a whole bunch of policies. But so, basically, we're gonna repeat everything, we're doing a policy subcommittee meeting every two or three weeks. And hashing out the policies, and then we're repeating that.
So then, I mean, I don't know if we're gonna solve that tonight, I just wanna get through this part. I don't, I think that is a discussion point, because I don't know the answer to that right now, I haven't really. Thought about it that way, um, I.
And I mean, I think the same thing applies, like, I think, you can come back to, like, thinking about it, like, the budget, you don't go through. Every article, every item on warrant. At a whole school committee meeting, like, we submit questions to the, like, we have questions, make questions to Brian or Polly. And then just do it and send it to them, unless it's a couple of interest or so specifically, if someone can't support a warrant. And I think that we need to trust them in some extent to do. Or, you know, work through the subcommittee process, by same way, we even send a question to the budget. Uh, because the same way, like, if we went through every, you know, warrant, and wanted to discuss them. We would have a backup on the year.
Well, the warrants are approved, so it's just about the second.
But if we didn't, what, if we wanted to discuss every single one, that way, then. That would be. Yeah. But for now, it sounds like you can approve. And we send one thirteen, one fourteen. Not once, anyone. That's one or two. It's just the three, BDD, BEC, and BUDG, right, which said not yet. And then we send one thirteen, one fourteen. Okay, without objection, I have the school committee able to move um BDD, BEC. Two, and we send one thirteen, one fourteen, one fifteen, one to be safe.
Better way to do, and this is only the first reading, right?
Yeah, the one that we just did, or those are accepted.
So, so we need to figure out a way that the four audience has gone out, doesn't have to sit through us going, you smell about, you know, a few changes for each one. Is that, is this painful? Yeah, it's unnecessary, I think, so that's why I thought if we, you know, we could just edit on on the sidebar. And then at least we can take a look at and see if we agree, uh it would just make it go faster, better.
Or we could like mail them out and say, these are the ones we're planning to bring next week.
That's what I, honestly, I think that's what looks helpful, because I know in the past, we talked about like.
So now, like, we want, our goal is to cover all of them.
But I have, I I, there's certain policies that I think are important to prioritize, aside from that's clean up, that's most of the thing.
Well, so the problem is, it's really hard to do things when there's so much contradictions, because if we have something, one policy. That works, trying to end up, we are going to want, and so, like, there's a ton of things that want to change the policy, but we're sort of putting them on hold. To do this reconciliation process.
I mean, I, I'm saying as a school, whenever, I don't necessarily want to focus all of the policies. I think there is also bound, saying, what are the things, policies that also are prioritized here, aside from helping keep clean up. That means also like, uh, like, things that have a class, I I have no idea, there are certain things that are coming up that are, you know, important. Aside from just doing the cleanup.
So that's why I think we have such a business to try to hurry up and do this reconciliation process that we can't take time. Because I know for me, like, I've been on this company for almost two and a half years, and there's all these things that I wanted to do. And this would just simply be, just holding all of it up for the new to merit that, otherwise it's just.
I don't know why it's taken, uh, it's taken two years.
Can't stop, we can't get them approved, like, this, this is work that we did a year ago, and now we're still not approved.
We were supposed to be sent all the way to like in March, first of all, and we had, we put, we always had policies in our agenda, so, but we, we pushed up in March.
And then didn't, the mask just come out and we just did a whole bunch of comments, just got changed again. Now we have to go back and get rid of that.
And the thing that we did in March were things that we had ready for school committee and to cover, I'll go. And so, and then, you know, there wasn't time to keep going, so, it's just, this, this process is.
There's just under three hundred policies in the, for masks.
Uh, I think that objection. Right? They are approved, and that objection of school made to accept one point four seven. So exactly.